All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. At this time I will call in to open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees, September 7th, beginning at 7:12 PM. Thank you everyone for coming out and being with us this evening. We will start with our opening ceremony. Please join our newest trustee, Justin Chopin, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause) 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 (Applause)
Pretty good for your first action there, Justin. And now, if I can ask everyone to please silence cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And also if you would join me in a moment of silence and please keep in your thoughts all of our hurricane victims around our state and beyond. All right. So, the first item on our agenda is the student performance, as you can see here, by our district-wide high school orchestra. Dr. Kavasos or Ms. Johnson?
The AISD has a rich and successful orchestral tradition. Our groups have represented the district from San Antonio as the Texas Honor Orchestra to New York's Carnegie Hall. This evening we will be treated to a district-wide high school orchestra. We have students from every high school in the district and they'll be performing "Blue Rhythmico" by Kurt Mosher. They were organized by Andrew Owens, our director from Arlington High School.
Wow. Thank you so much. Excellent way to start the meeting, that's right Ms. Walton. Thank you guys, what terrific, terrific sound. Can't be prouder than the fine arts in this district. We've got great things going on. All right, next on our agenda is the Student of the Month, Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you President Reich, and at this time we'd like to ask Principal Dalla to come up and present our Student of the Month from Arlington High School and ahead of time congratulate you for all your accomplishments that we're about to hear. So, go ahead, Mr. Dalla.
Good evening President Reich, Dr. Kavasos, members of the board. It's my honor to present Carson Bold as the AISD Student of the Month. Carson is more than just a great student, he's an all-around great human being. Let me tell you just a little bit about Carson the student. He's currently ranked 21st in his class. Carson is presently taking six IB classes and will be applying for his IB diploma at the end of the school year. Carson serves on leadership Arlington and is also active in Student Council and National Honor Society. But what sets Carson apart from his peers is what he's doing outside of Arlington High School. Carson started a nonprofit 10 years ago called Carson Cares. The mission of Carson Cares is to teach kids how to help others. Through Carson Cares Carson has organized monthly and quarterly serve youth volunteer opportunities with groups such as Safe Haven of Tarrant County, Arlington Live Shelter, Mission Arlington, and many others. He has also initiated a canned food drive, Cans That Count, mobilizing Arlington High School students to give more than 2,000 cans to the North Texas Food Bank. Carson Cares has also organized seasons of giving events where since 2012 students have assembled boxes for Operation Christmas Child. I could not be proud of this young man and it's my pleasure to present Carson Bold the AISD Student of the Month.
Thank you.
Any words you'd like to share?
I just want to thank Arlington ISD for being so involved in all of our schools and the students' lives. I really think that AISD is one of the best districts in Texas, if not the best, and I just thank you all for being so involved. And I think Mr. Dalla too, he has done so much to improve Arlington High School over the time that he's been here, been there. And he's been so inclusive of everyone and he just radiates happiness at our school.
All right. Is there anybody that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, my parents Ray and LaShawn Bold, my grandparents Bill and Linda Arms, and my friend and our student body president Jessica Olvera.
Excellent. So, as you may know, this is a very prestigious honor. There's only one student chosen every year from each high school, so you're one of an elite class. And based on what we've heard about you, there's no surprise there that you're standing here before us. What are you looking at, what are your future plans?
Well, I definitely want to go to college. My goal is to get a full ride somewhere.
I bet mom and dad like that a lot.
But obviously that's not just about the money, it's kind of a personal thing that I've just always wanted to do. But what I'm looking at, TCU and SMU and some other schools in the area, so.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you so much, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's definitely an honor and a distinction, the IB program, my daughter graduated a few years ago as an IB student, so the amount of work that's entailed there, I know firsthand, that's a lot of essays, a lot of research, a lot of late nights getting ready for those prompts and things. So, congratulations on that though, it's a wonderful experience that will be, you will hold very valuable going forward, so congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, one more thing, Dr. Kavasos and myself would like to come down and present you with something. So, Carson, this coveted bit of bling here is a pin that we wear very proudly as trustees and we only hand these out to very special individuals. And you can wear this on your ID, on any bit of clothing, every day, I know you're going to want to throughout the entire year, but seriously, here you go, thank you, thank you very much.
And then a recognition for you and memorialize this day that we're very proud of you and your accomplishments, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you would step over here, yes, you can applaud, that's all right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations. Very good. All right, moving on in our agenda, the next item is the Wall of Fame recognition, Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you President Reich, and I'll turn it over to Leslie from Communications to, a special presentation for our Wall of Fame. We have a cycle as this goes through and this wonderful group accomplished something after we had recognized our Wall of Fame, so Leslie.
Tonight we are inducting the 2016-2017 Hill Elementary Odyssey of the Mind team into the Wall of Fame. The Hill Odyssey of the Mind team, which was made up of three 4th graders and four 5th graders, won first at regionals in February, second at state in April, and sixth out of 67 teams at world finals at the end of May. They also were awarded the prestigious Renata Fusca Award given to individuals or teams who exhibit extraordinary creativity in their problems' solutions. Odyssey of the Mind is an international problem-solving program where young people are challenged to creatively solve problems while building skills in critical thinking and teamwork. During weekly and often bi-weekly meetings, they brainstorm and develop a creative solution to a long-term problem, which involves writing a script, making costumes, building sets, and perfecting the presentation. They also practice solving spontaneous problems where they are presented a problem that must be solved within a few minutes. The team competes in both the long-term and spontaneous at the tournaments. The Hill Elementary Odyssey of the Mind team includes several members, if they'll come forward when I call their name and just stay up in this area. Tate Kramer. Stella DeLoach. And Zoe Smith. Also here this evening we have their volunteer coaches Judy Gelfert and Krista Hanks. And we also have our Hill Elementary Principal Melinda Schweig.
Parents, my gosh, what you guys went through in helping and raising funds to get them to the bigger competitions. I had the privilege to see your initial performance at Hill with Dr. Kavasos and Ms. Hudson. And for those that kind of listened to what Ms. Johnson was saying, the reality is these guys were given a prompt, given a problem, and came up with 100% on their own the solution for it, as well as the acting out of what that solution looks like, as well as the design of costuming, the creation of the costuming, and any other things that were included in the sets. And it's absolutely phenomenal, it's no surprise to me that you guys are carrying all that noisy bling around your necks right now. Just absolutely fantastic. Odyssey of the Mind is a fantastic program, you guys killed it. Thank you for proudly representing our district so well, and this is an experience that will absolutely, you'll always remember, and I'll always remember getting to watch you. Fantastic, thank you, thank you so much for what you did, and congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations. And I know they already saw it, but their picture is already hanging on the Wall of Fame out in the hall.
Oh, good, 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 good. All right, way to go.
Congratulations.
Listen to that bling, that's fantastic. That's wonderful. So, we're going to make a slight adjustment in our agenda, the student achievement update, we will move to after a brief break, but we're going to proceed on with our ratification of administrative appointments and take care of that first. So, we have administrative appointments for the principal of Seguin High School, assistant principals, two for Seguin, McNutt Elementary, and assistant principal for Foster, I think that's all of them, Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you President Reich, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for principal for Seguin High School, one assistant principal for Seguin High School, an assistant principal for Foster, and an assistant principal for McNutt Elementary.
President Reich, I recommend that we, or I move that we ratify the administrative appointments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Ms. Mays for the ratification of the administrative appointments, any discussion? Doesn't look like it, okay, please vote. All trustees present and vote in the affirmative, congratulations, Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you President Reich, and I'd like to introduce the new principal for Seguin High School, Mr. Ray Borden.
Thank you. (Applause) Ray attended the University of Texas at Arlington, received his Bachelor of Business Administration, UNT for his Master of Ed in Ed Administration, most recently the principal of Turning Point High School, has been an assistant principal at Bowie High School, has taught 9th grade World Geography, 7th grade Science, 8th grade US History. Ray, congratulations.
Thank you. President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Kavasos, thank you. I would like to first give honor and praise to God, who continues to light my path and gift me with blessings beyond measure. I want to express my gratitude to Dr. Kavasos and this board for continuing to show support, approval, and confidence in my ability to carry out my dream, which is helping other students realize their dream on a daily basis. I want to thank my new area superintendent, Beth Hollinger, who has been nothing but supportive in her short time here. She's intelligent, she's compassionate, she's funny, and I'm very excited to be on her team. I've been hired five times in this district and Beth is the only, is only the second person to hire me, and you guys should have warned her, so. I want to thank Michelle Wilmansonato for giving me my first, second, third, fourth job with the district. She's always been a great support for me and kept me honest and pushed me towards greatness. I will forever be grateful for all of the things that I've learned under her leadership. Fernando Benavides, Bill Manley, Michelle Hill, Katour Madison, Kelly Hastings, thank you for putting up with me and allowing me to flower under your guidance and care. I take something I learn from you guys every day and I use it. To my Turning Point teachers, what a blast we have for the past two years. I learned so much working with all of them and they helped me lay the foundation for the type of principal that I aspire to be on a daily basis. I miss our shenanigans and I think about these guys every day and I love them. To the students and teachers at Seguin, thank you for making me feel so welcome in the short time that I've been there. Your commitment to excellence is evident, and I feel honored to be a part and do my part in helping them achieve new heights. Special thank you to Kirsten Lundeen and the assistant principals, Ms. Benau, Mr. Brown, Ms. Darkwood, Ms. Humes, Ms. Wesco, my fabulous new keeper, Ms. Sulema Aginaga, she's my secretary, that's why I call her my keeper, because, well, I need one. They have been more than awesome in helping me assimilate to my new position. They have shared their time and energy and insight to ensure I was ready to go on day one. They have been inspiring and it's inspiring to watch them. Thank you guys for modeling the expectation of excellence, which is what we strive for at Seguin. I also want to welcome our new AP, Mr. Billy Linton, he will be a great addition to our team and I'm very excited to start the work with him. And last but not least, thank you to my family, my kids, Kyla, the speed demon, who I follow here, Don Cooper, and she had no on the way here. New 16-year-old driver, I love you, we'll talk about that later. Aliana, who probably will drive slow for the rest of her life. And I had a son somewhere, I don't know where he is, Ryland, no, there he is back there. So, my mom and dad, I'm not sure if they made it, but my loving in-laws who are taking care of my little guy back there, today is actually my father-in-law's birthday, so happy birthday, Robert Gunnam. He gave himself a hand. And of course, my loving, patient, amazingly supportive, and beautiful wife Amanda, to whom when I said, "Baby, I think I want to go back to high school," she said, "Okay," and still supported me and encouraged me to follow my dreams. I love you baby. I'm so blessed to have this opportunity and I can't wait to give it everything I got. Go Seguin Nation.
Next I'd like to introduce the assistant principal for Seguin, Mr. Billy Linton. Billy attended Lion College in Batesville, Arkansas to receive his Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, Lamar University for his Master of Ed in Ed Administration, most recently an assistant principal at Young Junior High, has taught economics and has coached at Bowie High School, has taught world history and world geography as well. Billy, congratulations.
Thank you. To President Reich, the board, and Dr. Kavasos, thank you. Same thing, I'd like to give honor to God for giving me this opportunity and blessing me to give me this chance to continue my service in AISD. It's an amazing venture that I'm ready to take on. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Beth Hollinger and Mr. Borden for giving me this new opportunity to join them at Seguin and be a part of the great things that they have going on. I can't wait to get with the administrative staff and keep doing great things at Seguin and add to the culture of that campus. I'd love to thank my support system, my wife, Takara Linton. Four years ago, I sat in the same spot or stood in the same spot and told you how great of a drill team director she is, and she still is, and even better at this day. If you guys want to see a great show, go to Gopher Stadium on Friday night tomorrow and watch that drill team at Bowie perform. She's amazing, and honestly, I can't wait to flip roles with her, potentially next year when she gets an administrative job in AISD and we keep it in the family, and I'll be in the audience supporting her on the flip side of that, so I'll put that out there.
I think you got plenty of points just scored.
Keep working at that, thank you. Finally, I'd like to thank, of course, Kelly Hastings and the staff at Young Junior High. I had an amazing run at Young Junior High, you know, she gave me an opportunity, we talk about when potential gets real, there's no better example, took a person out of the classroom, a teacher, a coach here in AISD, and gave me my first opportunity as an administrator here in Arlington, AISD, and I had the opportunity to impact lives at Young for the past four years. Thank you to the staff at Young, you know, they're here and here supporting, and that machine's going to keep going on, they did great things, they'll keep doing great things, and I look forward to hearing and seeing about that here in the future, so thank you to Kelly and my coworkers, so. Finally, I look forward to continue to own my job, I think, you know, I'm charged with the job and I want to own it, and, you know, I want to continue to service students the way that they deserve to be served and do what's best for students. And I'm looking forward to, you know, reaching all students and striving to help them reach, maximize their potential now. I'm excited, I can't wait to get going, so thank you guys.
Next, our assistant principal for Foster Elementary, Ms. Tana Brooks. Tana attended the University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Speech Communications, University of Phoenix for Master of Ed in Ed Administration, most recently itinerant assistant principal at Patrick, has served as an itinerant assistant principal at Mary Moore, and an assistant principal at Spear, and at Rockmore, and has been a behavior intervention teacher as well. Tana, congratulations, welcome.
Thank you. To President Reich, Dr. Kavasos, members of the board, thank you so much. Nine years ago, I stood in this very spot beginning my career as an assistant principal at Rockmore Elementary. I am so proud and humbled and excited to continue my journey in Arlington ISD as assistant principal at Foster Elementary. I'd like to express my gratitude to Mr. Matt Brown, Tracy Brown, and Dr. Buell for their guidance and mentoring. I want to thank the staff of Patrick Elementary, who, I believe some came tonight, Spear Elementary, Rockmore Jones Academy, and Moore Elementary. But most importantly, I want to say to my new family, Principal Jackie Burden, and the Foster Elementary family, I would like to thank you for this awesome opportunity to work with each of you. Your warm welcome has made my transition so much easier. Tonight I have my family and friends in the back, my mom, I have my two daughters, you already met my granddaughter, that was her making out the door, she's one. And I don't see, and some friends. I appreciate their love and support and encouragement, and they always give so generously to me. I wanted to, as a reflective person, I wanted to just turn back to a time when my husband, I was riding in the car with my husband, and I turned to him and I said, "What am I going to do?" And he calmly said, "You will go and be great." And I'm not a crybaby, so don't think that. So, as my journey continues at Foster Elementary, I will still instill in every child that enters the doors that they too will be great. As I take my seat, I want to leave you with this quote by Marion Williamson. "Our deepest fear is not that we are inadequate, our deepest fear is that we are powerful beyond measure. We ask ourselves, who am I to be? Brilliant? Gorgeous? Talented? Fabulous? Actually, who are you not to be? We are born to make manifest the glory of God that is within all of us. As we let our light shine, we unconsciously give other people permission to do the same. And each day as we open the doors of Foster Elementary, we will do that for each and every child." Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce our assistant principal for McNutt Elementary, Ms. Nancy Zayas. Nancy attended Texas Wesleyan University for Bachelor of Arts in Science, University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction, most recently a bilingual ESL instructional specialist in our World Languages Department, has also been a bilingual ESL kindergarten teacher at Morton Elementary School as well. Nancy, congratulations.
Thank you. President Reich, members of the board, and Superintendent Kavasos, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and accept the great responsibility and honor of joining the McNutt Elementary Leadership Team, faculty, and staff. I want to begin thanking my biggest support group, which is my family. I have here my husband Jesus, and then one of my sons Joshua is here, my daughter-in-law Beatty, and my four grandkids are here, Janessa, Giovanni, Jaden, and Joshua. Say hi guys. My youngest son JJ, who's probably watching, he's in college, he couldn't come, and then my oldest is working today, so. This is my 22nd year in education, Arlington has been my second home and has supported me through the Grow Your Own program as I began my teaching career, and recently- And recently, last year, I was a part of the Emergent Leaders Program. To Sandy Perez, who has been my mentor for the past six years, thank you for your guidance, patience, and motivation to always be better. And I think she's here somewhere. Oh, there she is, thank you. To my Emergent Leader Study Group and tablemates, Cindy, Brenda, and Nikki, and I think they're here. Thank you for your support and encouragement. My mentors are Emergent Leaders, Katuska Rador, and her staff at Jones Academy for trusting me throughout the process. To the McNutt family, they've made my transition easier, they've been very welcoming. To the staff, students, and parents, I look forward to working with you to help maintain a high standard of student success and excellence for all of our students. And finally, to my family for their continued support, your love and encouragement, thank you.
Great, great, great talent. Welcome, welcome to your new roles. The, this section of our agenda often turns into a spirit competition, as we heard amongst the schools. You guys did great, y'all, y'all won. On that note, I would have to say and acknowledge all of the Hill teachers that are here in support of their Odyssey Mind Kids, so. So, our custom is that we ask you as appointees to follow Mr. Cale out for a brief reception so that everybody can say hello and congratulations to you. I'd also ask Carson, as Student of the Month, you're more than welcome to join, as well as the Odyssey of the Mind kiddos, if you want to go out there as well, so that everybody has an opportunity to congratulate you as well. So, if you can do that, I would ask if everybody in the audience would allow us as a board to go first so that we can come back in and get back to work. I appreciate it, we'll take a brief recess, we'll be back by 8:00 PM. All right. We're calling this meeting back into order and we will continue on with the presentation. Where are we? For the Student Achievement Update, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening, we'd like to bring an update on our most recent state assessment results and also give you kind of some perspective on just in relation to other districts that are similar to us. There is a lot of detailed information, but this is really more on that summary level that allows kind of an update on where we are, including some appeals and some things that we're filing with TEA. So, Dr. Barlow, welcome and.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having a few minutes this evening for me to share some assessment data, Dr. Rice, Board members, and Dr. Cavassos. So, wow, that looks interesting. So, what we'll go through tonight while the PowerPoint is coming up, we'll talk a little bit about some of our recent student results with respect to state accountability. We'll also talk a little bit about some of the campuses that did very well, some of the campuses that we may be seeking some appeals on, and also get into a little bit of grade level data, so. So, we'll get started. With respect to just our overall district average or overall district rating, we met standard, you can see the results here on the PowerPoint. We're under the, currently, we're under that index system that we've been under for the last four, five years, index one, two, three, and four. You can see the results on the screen, index one, we were at a seventy-one. You can also see the bar there that we're well above the criteria there of a sixty, so we're eleven points above the bar there with respect to index one. Index two, we are at forty-one, which is again above the bar there with the standard there being twenty-two, index three. We're at thirty-nine with the standard there being twenty-eight. And index four, we're at seventy-four above the bar there where the index is sixty. Just as a refresher, index one is student achievement. We'll go into a little bit of detail on that when we get to the appeals process. I won't spend a lot of time getting into the weeds, but we'll spend just a little bit of time on that. Index two is student progress, index three is closing the performance gaps, and index four is post-secondary readiness. So, to get started with, most of these results are based off of star results and then of course results. When you get to index four, you do have some indicators in there with respect to graduation rates and graduation plans and so forth, but we'll spend most of our time tonight on starting end-of-course results. What I'd like to do is just share by grade level here, so maybe as a quick scan of the data here is that we have our areas that are tested, I won't go through every single area, but we have grade-three reading, grade-three math. We also have Spanish versions at three, four, and six. Then you get down to grade five, you have science, grade-five science, Spanish, and so forth. I won't go through each one of the areas there, but you can see the results. Then on the next side, we also have grade seven, eight, and then high school. But what I want to focus on just a minute is that we have state results listed here for 2016 and 2017, and then we have AISD results for 2016 and 2017. One thing that you may notice is that as we've gone through the last several years is that there's been so many changes within the accountability system itself that it's really hard to actually do a comparison from year to year. We, I think we even had some conversations with the Board on that. So, really, the focus that we have right now is, how's the state doing? But not only how's the state doing, but how are we doing with respect to state growth? And you'll see that in just a minute when I do a couple of examples. In other words, not necessarily just comparing ourselves to the state criteria of maybe they had seventy percent and we had seventy-two percent, but how much did they grow from last year and how much did we grow from last year? To me, that's the best indicator right now as far as actually getting any sort of comparison, because there's been so many changes that the results are different from one year to the next. So, as a couple of examples here, you'll see that I've highlighted just a couple of areas. If I look at grade-four math, last year, the state had seventy-two percent and they went up three points to seventy-five percent. However, we had sixty-six percent and we went up to seventy-one percent, which was a plus five. So, to me, we outgained the state there. So, to me, that compensates a little bit for all the changes they're making, because the changes that happened within the districts, those same changes were made throughout the state, comparing from one year to the next. If I look at grade-four Spanish, but keep in mind also that our Spanish, the number of students that take Spanish tests across the state as well as in the district is much smaller, so those numbers fluctuate quite a bit more. But if I'm doing a comparison, I have state was at fifty-seven last year and fifty-nine this year with a plus two. The district was at thirty-six last year with a fifty-two this year at a plus sixteen. Maybe as another comparison, I don't have this highlighted, but on grade-five math. So, if I look at grade-five math, we can see where we increased, but we stayed the same as the state as far as the growth. So, if I look at the state, seventy-six to eighty-one, that's a plus five. The district, sixty-nine to seventy-four, that's a plus five. So, even though we saw an increase there, we're staying right at the state with respect to the growth. The ones in yellow there, we actually outpaced the state, which I think is a very positive, a positive move. If I go to the next slide, same setup, we just have different grade levels in different tested areas. So, there we start with grade-six reading, grade-six math, and so forth. We get all the ways down to the bottom of the slide where we have some end-of-course tests, Age One Biology, English One, and so forth. Again, I've highlighted a couple of areas there that we outpaced the state. So, if I'm looking at grade-six math, state had seventy-one, plus four was seventy-five, but we had a sixty-nine and then a plus eight of seventy-seven, so we outpaced the state there. Notice that some of these are in math, or several of them in math and science. You know, we've talked about STEM over the last several years, that, you know, what is that? How is that having an effect on our state assessments? I think this is probably some evidence there. And then especially when I get to algebra, because algebra is always one of those really tough areas throughout the state and the district. But the state being at seventy-seven last year and then eighty-two this year, that's a plus five. And then we had a sixty-nine to a seventy-six, which would be a plus seven. So, those are just some examples with respect to the grade level and subject area tests and just kind of a comparison to the state with respect to growth, not necessarily just the criterion to the criterion, but the growth there. So, let's move into distinctions. We've talked a little bit about distinctions over the last several years, so we're kind of familiar with the categories there. You can see them listed, I won't read through all of them, but basically, content areas and then closing the gap and student progress. But I think what's more interesting is, how do we compare to last year with respect to distinctions? So, I have a little bit of, I have a table here that does a little bit of a comparison there. In this table, to read this, is that I have areas here that had, yeah, areas here that had one distinction. So, these areas, Carter, I'm sorry, campuses that had one distinction. So, Carter Junior High, Swift Elementary, Hill, Pope, Atherton, and so forth, you can see those listed. So, there's eight campuses that had one distinction. There's two campuses that had two, seven campuses that had three, five that had four distinctions, six that had five, three that had six, and then you have these two here at the very end that got all distinctions that were available to them. So, we have Bailey Junior High and Gunn Junior High. Notice also that I've highlighted some of those in green. Those are ones who have more distinctions this year than they had last year. So, there's a couple of things to note, is that we had some areas here, some campuses, that came onto the charts since these had an increase and they have one this year, that means they didn't have any last year, so it's an improvement. They went from zero to one. But also notice here, what I think is interesting is that these two campuses aren't green. So, what does that indicate? They were at seven last year, they're at seven this year, which I think is just awesome. You know, sometimes when you get to that top level, it's harder to stay at that top level sometimes than it is to get to that top level and to maintain that consistency, I think is very awesome. Also notice, at the bottom of the screen there, I have a little note there that says, although the number of campuses receiving a distinction decreased from thirty-eight in 2016 to thirty-three in 2017, the total number of distinctions throughout the district increased from one hundred and eleven to one hundred and fifteen. So, even though maybe the campuses decreased, the total number of distinctions increased. Again, I think that's a very awesome job to our campuses. So, now let's get a little bit into the ratings. All campuses met standard with the exception of the following three campuses. Peach Elementary, Short Elementary, and Wemish Elementary. We're also investigating some possible appeals on each one of these, and I'll go to a little bit more detail on that after we get through the rating process. As we go into talking about the ratings and the indexes, so these are our criteria for each one of the indexes. There, notice that they're a little bit different criteria from junior high, high school, elementary, and so forth. I won't go into each one of the details there, but those are the criteria that we're using when we talk about indexes. So, these are the standards, and then as we go into the actual charts, let me go back just a minute there. So, as we go into the charts, a couple of notes that I would like to point out is that we have several charts there with respect to the networks and the indexes, we'll go through that in just a minute. But specifically, what I want to point out is that the increases and the decreases. So, you'll notice here that in, with respect to increases, those will be marked in green when I get to those charts, there were a hundred and seventy-three increases from 2016. In other words, if I compare 2016 to 2017, we had a hundred and seventy-three areas that increased. We had ninety-five areas that decreased, and then we had twenty-eight areas that stayed the same. So, you can see the increases far outweigh the decreases. So, sometimes when there's so many numbers involved, it's kind of hard to actually kind of get our mind wrapped around those numbers. This is just one way to do that. So, as I go into those then, whoops, skipped over one. These are by network, you may be familiar with these, these are also hanging in Comfortum B that you see probably when you're having dinner before the board meetings. But, so, we'll start with each network and I'll just point out a couple of highlights. So, this is the Arlington network, you can see the campuses listed to the left side there. You can see index one, two, and three. Everything marked in green is an increase, so you can see all of the green there. We do have some red areas, but the green, again, far outweighs the, far outweighs the red. The areas there in yellow are areas that actually fell below the standard. So, let's talk about Short Elementary just a minute, is that these two areas, if you compare back to those criteria, I believe that Short Elementary for index one was, needed a sixty, and I think this one was a thirty-two, I can't remember the exact number there for the, for the criteria. But notice that in index one and index two, that we fell short there. Just a brief summary of how the accountability rating is calculated. In order to meet standard, I have to meet the criteria for index one or index two and index three and index four. So, in order to meet criteria, another way to look, or to meet standard, another way to look at that is that I need to meet the criteria for index one, three, and four, or I can do it by meeting criteria for index two, three, and four. So, the challenge here is that Short doesn't meet either one of those scenarios. They fell short on both one and two, I could give one of these up, I can't give both of them up. And I'll show you in a minute how that actually calculates on the next couple of slides or a few slides down. So, Short Elementary would be improvement required because we fell short in both of those indexes. We go into the Bowie Network, first thing, notice there's no yellow cells, that's good, because everybody met all the criteria on all the indexes. Again, notice that the green far outweighs the red, which I think is a very positive. We go to the Lamar Network, again, we have a lot of green, this probably balances out, balances out a little bit more with the red. Also notice that we have more yellow cells there, so we'll spend just a minute on this. So, if I look at, say, Jones Academy, Jones Academy fell short on index two, but they're still okay because as long as they meet one or two, then they're okay in this area, and they already met three and four, so we're good to go with respect to meeting standard on that. It's those first two that gets a little tricky because it's an "or" statement between those two. Notice with Peach, they would have been okay if we'd have met index three because they, we fell short on index one, but we also met index two, so we'd have been okay in this area, but it's this area right here that we fell short on, so Peach would be improvement required. We get to Spear Elementary and Webb Elementary. You can see, again, they, we fell short on index one, but we met index two, so those would still be met standard. Then we get to Wemish. The interesting thing about Wemish is that we still have two areas here, we have index one, we met index two, so we'd be okay here, but when we get to index three, we fell short here. But to me, the most fascinating there is, all those colors are green. And not just green, we have some nice greens here, we have a plus four, a plus one, a plus three, and a plus eight. So, that campus is really moving forward with the growth, just not quite there yet. And when we get to the last couple of slides there, I'll show you a little bit more detail as far as that calculation goes. We get to the Martin Network, a lot of green, no yellow, that's good. We get to the Sam Houston Network, a lot of green, probably bounces out a little bit more with the red. But notice that even though it has yellow, there's no one in the Houston, Sam Houston Network that has yellow in both one and two or any yellow on three and four. So, all of these campus, campuses, even though there's some yellow there, all those campuses met standard. There's no improvement required there, which I think is awesome. Move to the SAGINE Network, a lot of green, so all these campuses are met standard. And then we move to the alternative campuses there, we have Arlington Collegiate High School, Newcomer, and Venture. A lot of green on these, a couple of red cells there on Newcomer, but no yellow, all of these would be met standard. Then we go into trying to compare ourselves to other districts throughout the state. So, when we're looking at data, I hesitate to concentrate on just one value, I like to maybe triangulate that data somehow, so I try, we try to look at that in multiple ways. That gives us a little bit better perspective with respect to how we're performing and maybe areas that we need to work on. And so, this is just another way to look at this, I've got two slides here that look very similar. The only difference is the groups of districts that are included, so I'll go through the first one and then I'll spend a little bit less time on the second one. So, this is all districts, and this is a comparison between 2016 and 2017. So, the first thing that we notice is that we have the indexes off to the left, and then what we try to do is we try to come up with a percentile ranking of how we rank with respect to all the other districts within the state. Sometimes when I'm just looking at a number, so when I look at a number here that says index three, we made a thirty-eight, it's hard for me to interpret that number unless I have some sort of perspective or some sort of framework to put that in. So, when I look at last year, 2016, we had an index one, we had four hundred and fifty-five districts that we outperformed, thirty-nine that we performed at the same level, out of eleven hundred and ninety-one total districts. So, that puts us at the fortieth percentile. Index two, we outperformed seven hundred and twenty-seven districts, tied the same, tied a hundred and four districts, and then there were eleven hundred and eighty-eight districts, so that puts us at the sixty-sixth percentile. So, maybe just a little bit of a comparison here. When I look at this number, a seventy-one, we normally think, well, that's a high number. But when I look at the percentile, I mean, the fortieth percentile, which really means- that I'm a little bit lower with respect to other districts within the state. However, when I go to index two, I look at thirty-nine, so that's just an absolute value there. That seems like, wow, thirty-nine, that's a low number. But when I do a percentile on it, I'm actually at the sixty-sixth percentile, so much higher than I am throughout the state. So that comparison there kind of gives me an idea. The number's just a number when I look at the index, it's just absolute value. How's everybody else doing? That kind of makes a difference in how I interpret those data. Then we take it to the next year. So I'm not going to go through all the details with the, with the calculation. The main thing I want to concentrate on right now is the percentiles for two thousand sixteen and the percentiles for two thousand seventeen. So notice here that in two thousand sixteen, we're at the fortieth percentile, we dropped to the thirty-eight, so that one's colored there in a little bit of a yellow color there. Index two, we went from the sixty-sixth to the seventy-fifth. So notice we had eleven, I'm sorry, nine points there gained with respect to percent. That's, to me, it's a substantial gain there. And not only a gain, but that gain is in student growth. That's really what we should be about, is student growth, not just some absolute criteria of some sort, but what are we doing with respect to student growth? Then we look at index three, we go from the forty-eight to the forty-eight, so we stay the same. Index four, thirty-eight to the thirty-seven. But notice that this is all districts throughout the state, so we're talking about a little over eleven hundred, almost twelve hundred districts. Another way to look at that is, what about districts that look like us? And the best way for us to do that, or one way that we can do that, is to look at districts that have similar percentages of low SES students. And so the values that we pick there is plus or minus ten, so we take ours, ten percent higher, ten percent lower. That gives us a little bit better grouping of districts that kind of look like us. And so the next slide is very similar, has the same type of setup, just different data. The main thing I'll point out is now we're down to about four hundred districts in both years, but now we look at the percentiles, and we go from the fifty-ninth. Here, we dropped a little bit in index one, but notice in all the other ones that we increased. So when I'm comparing ourselves to other districts that are like us, we actually had increases in all the percentile rankings for each index, with the exception of that index one. So now let's talk just a little bit about appeals. So the timeline I have on the PowerPoint there, August fourteenth was when ratings were released on TES, that's the private side of TEA. August fifteenth, they were released to the public, which is when we get really interested, because we're trying to see how we compare to other districts. September fifteenth, appeals must be postmarked, so that is next, I believe, next Friday, sometime next week. And then we, if we file any appeals, which we plan to file at least one, possibly three, then we won't get those results back until November. So even though we have ratings right now, we work under those ratings until we hear something back in November with respect to those decisions. So now let's talk a little bit about the possible strategy for those appeals. Let's talk about Short. This is the one that we feel the best about as far as this appeal being somewhat strong. So index one is the one that we're going to work on. If you'll remember, on Short, they had index one and index two. We're going to work on index one. And here's how this, here's how this might work, is that in order to calculate index one, we had, currently, we had seven hundred and five tests that actually went into the calculation. So there were seven hundred and five tests taken, that's math tests, reading tests, writing tests, and so forth. So if I'm a student, and I took math, reading, and writing, I count in that denominator three times, so it's tests, not students. We had passed four hundred and nineteen. Notice, we need a sixty. We're at fifty-nine point four, that rounds to a fifty-nine. So you can see how close we are. There were actually one test away from being at, at a number there that would round to sixty. So our strategy there was, we had some writing tests that we felt like needed to be rescored. We sent those off to be rescored. We had several of them. We had two of them come back that actually increased to a passing grade. So we're going to take those two tests, we'll work that through in appeals letter, and when we redo the calculation, now notice this number turns from four nineteen to four twenty-one. So it's the same student, same test, everything's the same, it's just now two of them have been rescored and actually came back passing. That gives us a four twenty-one over seven oh five. Now it goes up to fifty-nine point seven, which rounds to sixty, and that would meet index one. We feel like this, the question, yes?
Doctor Barlow. So just, because there's a lot of information, and you deal with this every day.
Sure.
So, so on this, the exams you can get rescored are the writing exams, right? So let's be clear about that. So those are the ones we're submitting, or have been submitted. Of the ones submitted, two came back passing.
Yes.
But didn't others increase?
We had, I think at Short, I'm trying to remember the numbers on that now. I think on Short, we submitted fifteen, we had eleven that changed, two that changed high enough to pass.
Right.
If I remember right.
So it just gives you a perspective, and we can submit for rescoring the writing, because that, it's not subjective, but it tends to be, you have two scorers and things like that, so there's a process for that. And so that's really significant, I think, just to understand that that's what we're resubmitting, not all the tests and not the multiple choice.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, that's a good point. So our thought there is that with Short, we feel pretty good about this, and the reason I say we feel pretty good about it, because typically when we file an appeal, what TEA wants to see in an appeal is that it's something that was not our fault. It wasn't like a coding error or something like that, although we have filed appeals in the past and won those, it's just not as strong. What they would rather see is that there was a mistake made somewhere else. In this, we could say, well, ETS, our, the testing contractor, was the one that actually scored incorrectly to begin with, therefore it raised, and so that wasn't anything that happened with the district. And so that's why we feel like it's a stronger appeal than maybe some of the other strategies that we could use. Okay, I'm going to go into, I've got two more. Peach Elementary, very similar strategy, except now we're talking about index three, so the calculation is a little different. I won't go into the details of the calculation, but notice that this says points instead of tests. It just happens to be that, in this case, that three points equaled about three tests, but it's not, those aren't necessarily the same thing. So here we had an index three, currently, we have a possible, actually, that should have been maximum points, not tests taken. This should say maximum points here. We had a maximum points here of eight hundred. We gained two hundred and seventeen of them, which gives me twenty-seven point one, which gives us a score there of twenty-seven. We need a twenty-eight. Okay, this one's a little bit tricky, in that, notice here that if I add three points, again, it happened in this case to come out to three tests, it wouldn't always, then that would, what I need is a two-twenty over the eight hundred, which would give me twenty-seven point five, which gives me twenty-eight. We used the same strategy with Peach Elementary. We sent several tests off, I don't remember all the numbers on that. We needed three. We just got the results back this morning. We had two of them come back as pass, so we're still going to be one test short there with respect to meeting that criteria on index three. So we still may investigate some other strategies. I don't feel nearly as strongly about this one. We're still going to be one test short if I use that strategy with respect to an appeal. Then we move to Wimbeach. Using the same strategy, or the same index on Wimbeach, and so we have index three, again, we need a standard of twenty-eight. This one gets even more complex. With index three, the first thing that, that you look for is which student groups last year had twenty-five students in the student group. So it's a two-year test on index three, without getting too far down into the weeds. So the first thing that, that you look for is, which student groups did you have last year that had twenty-five students in that student group? Because in order for it to be calculated this year into index three, you need twenty-five last year. That becomes very important with Wimbeach, because even though Wimbeach is about twelve or thirteen tests short this year, if I were to go back and recalculate and look at last year's scores, the white student group had twenty-four in it. If they had had twenty-five in it last year, it would have actually gone into the calculation this year, so it's one student last year. What that does to the calculation now is, I have maximum points here currently at sixteen hundred, we've got three ninety-nine, twenty-four point nine, or twenty-five, I need a twenty-eight. So this is a pretty big gap, twenty-five to twenty-eight. That actually equals about thirteen tests. However, if I'd have just had this extra student in this group right here, and this is a twenty-five instead of a twenty-four, then when I calculate the white student group into this calculation here, I have five sixty-eight out of a maximum of two thousand. The calculation changes a little bit. I'm at twenty-eight point four, which rounds to twenty-eight, and I would meet index three. So from a very kind of high-level, maybe, technical point of view, is that on each one of those campuses, Wimbeach, I could come down to we were, we were short just one student, to which, to me, is very, very close. And then also on Peach, one student, which is very, very close. In my mind, Wimbeach made the, met standard, they just got caught on the technicality there. So that's how, that's how close we are on those campuses. And I want to stop, I think I might have another slide, but I'll stop right there and see if you have any questions. I'll see, maybe.
So, Doctor Barlow.
Actually, my next slide is questions.
So can you go back real quick?
Absolutely.
And I just want to highlight one thing, on the comparison to other districts with economically disadvantaged, because I think it was kind of fast, and I want to make sure that.
Yes.
On, on index two, which is probably the, the most robust in terms of indexes, because it deals with student growth, and it doesn't mean that, that you didn't pass and you grew. It means that even if you passed, you had significant growth.
Yes.
And to be at the eighty-fourth percentile with districts with poverty, just the, the same rate as us, is really a tribute to our teachers, and our principals, and our campuses, and all the support system.
Absolutely.
Because this is where you talk about, look at all the numbers, where's the day-to-day interaction and growth for students over, over a year? And to be at the eighty-fourth percentile is just something that's very commendable, and I really want to take the time on teachers in particular at the campuses, because that means that students are making growth in these areas, and it's the most robust index, in my opinion, which is why the state continues to, to use that one. And it really tells you about the effect of instruction and classroom instruction on students and their performance. And there's a lot of numbers here, but I want to make sure we, we don't lose sight of that in, in respect to our classrooms every day.
Thank you, Doctor Cavazos. Points well taken. We do have some questions.
Sure.
Doctor Barlow, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, President Rice. Just a quick question on the slide for Wimbeach. How, how was the student's race and ethnicity determined? Is that self-identified or by the school?
Well, it goes through the normal PMS process, and so students, as they enroll, then they, or parents, then they select a race or ethnicity, and so everything would be based off of that. So that just flows into the assessment process.
Thank you.
Ms. Mace?
Thank you. Thank you for pointing out the example of Wimbeach, and I think this is where we have fought so hard about rating schools A through F, because although Wimbeach has the two yellows, meaning they didn't meet the criteria, the fact that they are improving and increasing, to me, would make no sense to say, hey, we're going to close down a school that has been making progress. So I just want to point that out, because that is so frustrating to me. Yes, and to them, the students and the, and the teachers there. Okay, so on page nine, the slide that says AISD compared to all districts, the first one, for each of the indexes, the total districts, why does that number change?
Because, that's a great question. So what I'm trying to do there is I'm trying to match up the same districts in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, and if for some reason one district didn't have data, maybe that district doesn't exist anymore, or there was some weird reason they didn't have data that year, then that fluctuates a little bit. So, so that, when I'm looking at two thousand sixteen, I'm looking at eleven hundred, actually, this is from the year before. So this two thousand sixteen is a comparison to two thousand fifteen. The, the districts there, eleven hundred ninety-one, that would be eleven hundred ninety-one districts that I had data for both two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, because I was doing that same growth measure there between the two, the two years.
For that index?
Yes. And so they may even change from index to index, because there may be.
That was my question.
There could be some indexes where they didn't have a student growth measure there for some reason. It happens throughout the state, and so that's why it fluctuates a little bit. I'm trying to do only districts that I have data for both, both years.
Okay. And then on page eleven, for Wimbeach, two questions. One, based on the standard that you were using for the score and rounding, you said twenty-eight point four, would have, you're going to argue that that would have rounded up to twenty-eight?
Are you on the last?
I'm on the Wimbeach Elementary.
So after, so where we are currently is we have three ninety, three hundred ninety-nine points out of a total maximum of sixteen hundred, which gives me twenty-four point nine, that rounds to twenty-five.
Right.
We need a twenty-eight, so it's five sixty-eight out of two thousand. This changes a little bit, which gives me twenty-eight point four, which rounds to twenty-eight.
Okay. And then, a follow-up to the question Ms. Hudson asked, for the way that you may check your nationality, if you were biracial and white was one of the races you were mixed with, could you check white, or could you check whatever you would like, and where do you classify if other is an option?
So if, again, that's selected either by the student or the parents, and if a student or parent selected, let's say, African-American and white, then that would go under two or more races. So they wouldn't go into any of those areas. They wouldn't be considered white or African-American, it goes into the, the group called two or more races. And that's a federal definition with respect to how that's calculated.
So that could make a difference?
It could make a difference as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any more lights from trustees, so I don't think there's any more questions. I just, I, my, my comment is, I'm glad you're here to go through and decipher and make sense of all this, and, and really, I'm not just saying that as an ingest, ingest thing, but the, the reality is, your, your approach is really trying to look at it in a different perspective, from an intelligent, high level, to really make sense of all of these numbers. So I do appreciate the efforts. Sure, we'd love to see all the, you know, no reds, but to point out the, the increases. I think that's really significant. So I do appreciate this work. The question that I have, these change every year as far as the thresholds? What are, I'm trying to remember the details from the legislative session, are these, the targets, everything's different now, right? And so as far as you trying to get fifteen to sixteen and to seventeen, what are you going to do next year? Because there's no trend.
That's, that's a great question. So maybe just a little bit of background on that, is you're absolutely right. With House Bill twenty-two, then, everything changes this year. We'll be in a three-domain system, we're not sure exactly what that would look like, so it's going to really be hard to do comparisons from year to year, so it even changes again. A couple of comments on that, you know, the commissioner's pretty, been, made his opinion known as far as keeping things steady for about five years. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but keeping it consistent, I think, is positive, because, I mean, our campuses need some consistency, our principals, teachers, parents, we need some consistency so we can actually compare. Maybe another, another comment on that is that as we go through that process, is that starts, that whole process of actually going through, developing that system, goes through the ATAC Committee at TEA, and Doctor Cavazos was a very, did a great job in getting us to where we can participate in that as a district. And so there's only about twenty-five or thirty districts, so he made a couple of phone calls, and we'll actually be able to participate in that process of building that system via AISD. So it's a very positive thing.
That's great, that's great. And, yeah, the more that we can be at the table to try to.
Absolutely.
Frame this, just like with the cutoff being so, such a razor-thin margin, I, I don't think this is necessarily workable solution, but to have some kind of, you know, percent on, on either side type of thing, but I know the answer would be, we got, everybody's going to shoot for the low end of that percentage, and that's going to be the bar anyway. So the only other, I guess, question that I have is on the, the schools, you said that there was five schools that didn't have distinctions that did last year. I believe it was distinctions.
Yes.
So of those five schools, is there anything that you're able to do as far as predictive modeling, where those schools have a heads-up of, we're not trending well? Are they prepared ahead of time that this is probably going to happen? What kind of, what kind of stopgaps do we have in place so that we're preparing for that, being able to modify mid-shift? Or is it a complete surprise, and what happened, and what do we do now?
Sure. So we, we have begun some work, we haven't gotten real far on the distinctions, but But we have done some work with respect to giving campuses some data with respect to how they fared last year. And not just in how close they were, but actually how many students that actually would go into the calculation. The distinctions are quite a complex process too, because you're really, you're competing with forty other schools and you're trying to be in the top quartile in each one of those areas. So it's a pretty rigorous process. But we have started some processes with respect to at least giving them some data, maybe not so much predictive value, but maybe this is where you were last year and this is the numbers that you would need as you move forward. You know, again, with as we go move forward, we don't know what House Bill twenty-two is going to be. So we don't know if that's even going to be an area of interest next year.
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, thank you. We have a light. Yes, Ms. Walton, go right ahead.
Just a quick comment. I don't have any questions. A great presentation, Dr. Barlow. Thank you. I just want to reiterate what Dr. Cavassos says. And that is that we have a lot of teachers, hard-working staff members of all kinds that have made this possible. There's more good news here than not. And we're moving forward and that's what's important. And I hope we can convey to our teachers and our teaching staff and our building administrators just what a tremendous job we know they're doing.
Sure, absolutely.
Yep, great work. Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the information. Okay, we'll now continue on. Next would be a public hearing. We don't have a public hearing. So we'll move on down to discussion action items. The first one, letter A, Consider Athletics Complex Design Update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and we'd like to provide the board an update on.
Oh, you are so right, Mr. Hogg. Yes, I missed that. I'm sorry. Let's hold on that for just a moment. The next section I skipped right over was open forum for agenda items. Good catch. I don't see any cards here, Ms. Benjamin. Do we? No cards. Okay. All right, then we will, thank you, thank you. Technicality, that's good. Yes, appreciate it. All right, now, Dr. Cavassos, please.
Thank you, President Rice. So we now bring forward an update on our athletics complex design and the work we've done thus far. We've had an opportunity to visit with the board committee as well on this and also with our stakeholders. And so tonight we have an update on that and ultimately with the recommendation of our programming for that. So Ms. Powell.
President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. As you know, in our 2014 bond package, we have funding for a district-wide athletics complex to provide space for swimming, wrestling, and gymnastics. So we have purchased property on Division Street where we intend to construct this facility. On that same property, we will also construct our Fine Arts Center. So these two buildings will be side by side. HKS Architects is the architecture firm that the district has engaged to design this facility. And we've been working with them across a big part of the summer, I guess, beginning late June and into July, on the design of the athletics complex. And so tonight, what you're going to hear is, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, an update on where we are in that design process, specifically focusing on the architectural program for the facility. And that essentially is a compilation of all the spaces that we need in that building in order to operate the programs that we intend to operate there. That then becomes the basis for the rest of the architectural design process. So we have our consultants here with us this evening. From HKS, we have Mark Vanderfort and Wayne Reynaud. And their subconsultant, Councilman Huntsaker, is the consulting firm for the swimming pool. That's a key element in this project. And so we have a councilman, from Councilman Huntsaker, Darren Bavard and Travis Stinsby. And so I'm going to turn this now over to Mark Vanderfort with HKS to make the initial part of the presentation. I'll come back up towards the end to close it out.
Good evening, Dr. Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Once again, we're honored to have this opportunity to work with the district on this very important and significant project. And as Cindy said, we'll be sharing with you a little bit of what we've been up to. We're going to go over the project's schedule real quickly, talk a little bit about, ultimately, the program approval at the end of this evening. We hope to have some of the case studies and some of the tours that we've taken as a group and review committee recommendations. Here's a schedule which shows, as Cindy mentioned, both the athletic center, the athletics complex and the Fine Arts Center are on the same site. And the intention is that we are able to bring both projects together as one when we go out to the market. What you see on the screen is a combined schedule that shows that the Fine Arts Center started earlier. It's in red. The athletics complex is shown in blue and you can see that as we progress, that the two projects merge as one here and will go out to the market together. There will be benefits to the district in many ways that these, both projects are on the same site. There will be synergies between them. There will be utilities that can be shared. They'll complement each other. They'll be of the same specifications. There's a lot of benefits and savings on behalf of the district in that regard. This is what we refer to as our Zoom schedule. And you see that we are here just after the yellow line, which is Labor Day. And we're going to come back in October on the Fine Arts Center. And then in November, we'll be back again to present schematic design to you on the athletics complex. What we've learned, you'll maybe remember this slide because the process, the overall process of defining, designing, and delivering a project is really about, maybe the most foundational, important phase of those three is where we are today, which is defining the problem that we're trying to solve before we begin solving it. And that's what we've been up to in this preliminary design phase. As we mentioned earlier, we had a charrette process, several coaches' meetings, several site visits to both, to nautatorium facilities, gymnasium facilities, and the like. We've had meetings with the city as well as with the convention and Visitors Bureau. So a lot of input folded into the mix. And here's some images of our discovery shreds where we broke into groups to study each of the different uses, potential uses for the building. You can see here some voting on priorities from the user's perspective, which are illustrated here in terms of goals. And these are prioritized as they were voted on in that meeting. Just, I won't go over each one, but unsurpassed student access, representing all schools, high schools and feeder zones equally, world-class, state-renowned UIL competition and host facility, promote health and wellness for the entire community, and so on. So we can come back if you'd like, but there's also, in addition to goals, we try to understand some facts that maybe weren't known originally. But just to let everybody know, UIL high school swimming events are twenty-five yards. You'll see in a minute that we are proposing a fifty-meter pool. That's known as a long course. Collegiate events and Olympic events are fifty-meter events. High school practice and competition is twenty-five yards. The number of practice lanes is based on the number of participants that are estimated and also based on usage that the district has at several venues across the city right now. The number of seats in the gymnasium and the nautatorium, we've looked at it in several different ways. The gymnastics and wrestling, both of those setups are very demanding because of the mats and especially in gymnastics, the sort of equipment that's required and bolted to the floor and things like that. Basketball and volleyball are, can be well-accomplished in the facility as it's envisioned. So the other thing is the city of Arlington has indicated that we'll be providing, or be required to provide a storm shelter as part of this facility. Here you see a diagram of a study that was done two or so years ago by DeYoung Richter, which was the starting point of our analysis. And again, we have sort of determined what might be ideal relationships between each of those spaces and also have perfected a list of spaces as seems to be most appropriate for the program. Case studies that we've looked at in different sports, including wrestling here, you see that there's six mats shown and we'll have an equivalent, we're planning to have an equivalent floor layout. One of the things that you see there is that some of the mats will overlap, which is an efficient way to use the space for those mats. And those mats are, you know, they're monolithic and they're high-quality mats. They're heavy. They don't easily move around and so on. And so this is a rigging system that is employed often to lift those mats and be able to move them up into the rafters and then back down for storage and for use. Basketball and volleyball will be, this will be a great venue for both of those sports. We're also proposing an elementary gymnastics training center where the, maybe the younger gymnasts can gain PE credits and can also learn from a, at a young age. And this program can be part of a feeder to the high school gymnastics events, which are currently housed at Webb Elementary School. The nautatorium, there's several issues. You may understand that there's a lot of humidity that's generated by a pool. There's acoustical issues. There's lighting issues. There's maintenance issues, all of which, I know Councilman Huntsaker has been a great resource and will continue to be a great resource on this project throughout its construction. But we're looking at all aspects of that. The layout of an nautatorium, you would typically not only like to have the correct number of practice lanes and the diving well on one end of the pool, the deeper end of the pool. You'll see in a minute a proposed layout that I'll go into in more detail. But the ability to run meets from a control area, the ability to separate participants from patrons that are there to watch. There's a lot of issues to be resolved and we feel like we've looked at those very carefully. We went to visit the Louisville ISD Nautatorium, completed a few years ago, which is a very fine example. We've analyzed several others that are comparable with fifty-meter pools. This one in Keller ISD, which has, is an eight-lane pool with six hundred seats. Mansfield ISD, twenty-one practice lanes, seven hundred fifty seats, built with their stadium in 2004. Rockwall ISD has a nice nautatorium with twenty-four practice lanes and a good-sized deck, pool deck. That's an important aspect. And a smaller pool here, this is known as a twenty-five-yard stretch pool. It's not fifty meters long, but it's in New Caney. So we look at those different options and it gives us a lot of ability to see what's been done recently, understand the state of the art, compare, and figure out what's most appropriate for Arlington ISD. So this, this is a tool that we use. It's not a floor plan yet. It's a building diagram. It's just a way for us to see how these spaces might relate to each other beyond a bubble diagram and to envision, you know, where the major blocks of space are. You see in this case, the nautatorium is at the top of the page. The figure on the left is the first floor diagram. The figure on the right is the second floor. So you see some seating that would be on a second-floor area overlooking the pool area. Some shared spaces between the nautatorium, which is at the top of the page, and the gymnasium at the bottom of the page might include the weight room, a classroom or meeting room, and a training area that could be accessible by both of those facilities. And then you see the layout of the proposed wrestling mats down there on the gym floor. Six mats, basketball, volleyball, all capable within that same space. And at the very bottom of the page, you see the proposed elementary gymnastics training area, which has a tall ceiling and can be used very flexibly with the gym. Here's the.
Can I ask just a quick question? On the volleyball, the configuration would be just for one volleyball game? It's not like competition or tournament, what, right?
Well, you can actually do both. There can be a center court centered in the basketball, which would be just like it is at the tennis center. But you can have four courts in that space that could be for a tournament setup, or two. So the pool diagram that I mentioned earlier is shown here as a fifty-meter pool. It's fifty meters. It has two bulkheads. The bulkheads are floating bulkheads. They can be moved to the edge of the pool, in which case it's fifty meters between the bulkheads. Or the bulkheads can be moved to the center, as you see here, in which case it's twenty-five yards between the bulkheads. And the swimmers would swim parallel to the length of the pool. But for practice, you see the little hyphenated lines painted on the bottom of the pool or on the bottom of the pool that would define those practice lanes that could be used by multiple swimmers and really accommodate the full gamut of practice requirements. Then on the left-hand side, you would see the diving well. That would be the deeper end of the pool. We're proposing to have two three-meter, sorry, two one-meter boards and a three-meter diving board. So the actual program list, you may have a copy of, but these are the elements that comprise the actual nautatorium as it's conceived, including, like I mentioned earlier, the pool and the deck and the small lobby, elevator access to the second floor, stair access to that patrons' area, locker rooms, adult locker rooms on the first floor for changing, and so on. The gymnasium includes a six-mat competition floor, locker rooms, multipurpose room, gymnastics training area, and so on. The, there's also a multipurpose room which works closely with the locker rooms for such things as wrestling weigh-ins and perhaps an area to keep gym bags for visiting teams. Shared spaces are accessible from both of those facilities, weight room, training, team meeting room. And then the AD office suite is proposed to be part of this complex and would be able to be, have easy access to either one of the two halves of this facility. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Cindy, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. So is what you're going to see on this slide and the next one is a summary of the detailed spreadsheet that Mark just showed you. This is a high-level summary of the program that we are recommending to the board for this facility. A competition gym with twelve hundred seats. We'd have the ability to add up to three hundred more seats on the floor. And then also a permanent wood floor that would allow us to also have basketball and volleyball competitions there. We've already talked about the wrestling, the fact that we would be able to accommodate six mats in the space and that would allow us to host district and regional tournaments. Overhead storage system for the mats, that'll help us maximize our space on the floor, not have to create other storage space, a footprint for additional storage space for the mats. Elementary gymnastics training space, this would be a dedicated space that would allow us to have PE units there so we could rotate students in from across the district into this space and teach tumbling lessons with kids. Also providing an opportunity for an open mat-type framework where kids could come outside of typical school hours and practice and learn about gymnastics. This will help us create a feeder program, a pipeline for our high school competition program that right now is rather small in size. Then also support spaces, including locker rooms and the multipurpose rooms and concessions. And then this particular site allows us the opportunity to add on in the future for additional program needs that we identify going forward. program needs that we identify going forward. This program has, as we talked about for gymnastics, a dedicated space for the elementary program. Right now, our high school competition teams practice at Webb Elementary. We have a gym there that used to be a junior high school, so they have an extra gym where our gymnastics program trains and we have competition. As you heard Mark mention in his presentation, the equipment in the mats required for gymnastics are very substantial and require a significant amount of space to house and to store. And then also the equipment requires tethering to the floor in order to ensure that it's safe for users. And what we've determined after site visits to neighboring district and looking at their facilities, looking at our needs for our program and the current capacity of our program, the size of our program, is that we've got a very good facility right now for practice and competition. We think that space probably does warrant some updating, everything from paint, maybe some signage outside to clearly identify the building, that entrance as being for the gymnastics program, some other enhancements inside the space itself with bleachers and what have you. But we think that that space is very sufficient for our program as it exists today. We have a need to spend some effort at growing this program. And so the proposal that you see here with the space that's provided in the athletics complex, we think gives us the best opportunity to begin that pipeline, to really begin enhancing that program from the very youngest age and developing interest in very basic skills in the sport and allowing us to begin to populate it all the way up into the high school ranks. So that's the gymnasium piece of the program that you see here in terms of the nadatorium. Again, we're looking at a 50-meter stretch. The stretch piece is the additional width required to accommodate the two bulkheads, as Mark mentioned. This will give us eight swim lanes and 23 practice lanes. The diving area is part of this pool. We're looking at also providing 900 spectator seats on a second level. And then the appropriate support spaces for the nadatorium, again, locker rooms, meet control rooms, concession, storage, et cetera. And then we have a robust swim program now. Our kids have to practice at TCC and UTA. We lease pool space there. With this particular program that we're proposing, we'll be able to bring all those kids in here should the program continue to grow. That's something we can be able to accommodate just by working at the schedule on practice times and what have you. We also have an intention to provide an elementary safety training program here for swim safety at this pool in this facility. So again, bringing kids here throughout the year from their home campuses for PE units in the nadatorium. So those are the, those are the program components that we're planning to include in the Fine Arts Center. Our indications right now, we probably are looking at this program, which is, that you've seen this evening, will likely exceed the budget that we have. We have other resources beyond the bond program that we anticipate that we'll be bringing to you all for consideration in order to fully fund that program that we've talked about to meet our desired programming needs for the district with funds outside of the bond program. So again, I just showed this schedule, and as Mark mentioned, our anticipation is that we will ultimately continue our design work on both the Fine Arts Center and the athletics complex and by next April, put these, these two facilities out for bid as one construction contract package and then begin construction on both, with both to complete around June 1st of 2020 and to open by that fall. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. And what we would look to the board for this evening is a consideration, a vote if you're prepared to do so, on that program so that we can let HKS move forward then with the rest of their design work.
All right. Thank you. And there's definitely some questions. First up, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Raj. I just wanted to throw a couple of comments out to my colleagues. As you saw in the presentation, and I don't know if officially got mentioned, but we were looking at, there's different types of pools, which luckily the experts taught me the difference in what the pools mean, but this proposal we're looking at is a mertha pool, which is considered a faster pool. It's industry standard of what you really need for any type of regional events, hosting events, those type of things. Also, there was some concern over the bulkheads of what they meant and what they do, and bulkheads actually make it a more flexible pool. Of course, there's some extra costs with a mertha pool and with a bulkhead pool, but the bulkhead, you're able to move them. It allows for more practice for different groups to break it up on some of those things, and it actually makes the pool faster if they're swimming between bulkheads. So just a couple of things as those two things went through, I wanted to throw out for clarification, colleagues.
And that's a good point. And one other thing that I realized, I don't think we mentioned along the way, was we had presented this information to the board subcommittee for the athletics complex and went through in much greater detail than what you saw here this evening, information about the program and gave those board members a chance to ask questions about it, so.
Okay, very good. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Raj. Silly question, how deep is the pool? Mark, answer that.
Foot, okay.
Oh, okay.
On which end?
Splash.
Come on, Darren.
Splash.
These guys can explain the reason it varies from one end to the other.
I don't think they wanted to, but thanks for making them come up and talk.
Glad to be here. I'm Darren Bivard with Councilman Hunsaker. As Mark mentioned, we're supporting the HKS design team as the Aquatic Specialty Consultant. We didn't have a slide this evening that illustrates the depth profile because we're still fine-tuning that as a part of the program. But what's planned is obviously we'll have a deep end for diving. So as Mark mentioned, we're accommodating two one-meter springboards and one three-meter springboard. The three-meter springboard will dictate the depth requirement, and that's by code. There's National Federation of State High School standards that require us to have a certain depth. Now, we typically want to exceed the minimum slightly, so we're proposing a depth of 13 feet at the deep end of the pool to accommodate that three-meter springboard diving. For the primary course of the pool, where we showed in the graphic, swimming, the competition course between the two bulkheads for your 25-yard swimming, that would be proposed as all deep water, or at least seven feet deep, to give the swimmers the ability to do flip turns in deep water. That creates, again, a faster environment for the athletes. And then at the shallow end of the pool, that can be divided by the bulkhead, where we can do the learn-to-swim programs and PE credits, there we're proposing sloping up to three foot eight inches or three foot six inches, depending on how we work out the overall depth profile. So you have intermediate depth for those learn-to-swim programs, you have all deep for your competition course, and then you have your diving well at 13 feet.
Could you mention swimming between the bulkheads is a little bit faster pool?
What, what the bulkheads allow us to do, as you mentioned, is be very flexible in terms of how the pool is configured for different programs. So we can divide the pool now into a practice course configuration or a competition course configuration in different areas of the pool. If we want to have diving activities going on simultaneously with swimming, we can do that by dividing those areas with the bulkhead. Swimming between the bulkheads allows us a couple of things. One is if we set the course up that way, if our primary course is in the middle of the pool, it also gives us the ability to center it on the spectators. So for sightlines for spectator seating, now we're centered within this grand space of the nadatorium, and all of the spectators essentially have the ideal view onto that competition course. With the bulkheads, they're parked in that position for the course configuration. So if you're swimming between bulkheads, we have to certify that course length to make sure that we're right on the tolerance, to make sure we're, we have the ability to set records and break records by swimming in the fastest course possible. So with that, with parking those bulkheads in that position, that can be fine-tuned. We're not reliant so much on the overall dimensions of the pool. We're setting those bulkheads where they need to be to be exactly 25 yards plus the tolerance for our touchpads for swimming competition.
Thank you.
While you're up here, there's definitely some other lights, but regarding the pool, with our strategic plan and what led to the bond was world-class. This absolutely sounds like world-class to me, however, I'm a layperson when it comes to swimming and competitive swim. Is, is this on, not just on trend, but leading edge out? Or has that put us into a different pool category that shoots the budget too much so that we can still have, absolutely meet the needs of our students, but also to have that potential Olympic or USA quality to attract them? Are we going to be building something that it's awesome for today, but by the time it's actually done, there's actually a next generation that's coming that we could have done?
There's a couple of different ways maybe to answer that question, so I'll throw out a few considerations. Certainly, as a world-class facility, the benchmark would be the long-course pool, the ability to swim 50 meters to train world-class athletes. And that crosses over into other types of programming as well, if we're going to be doing summer league swimming and USA swim meets and that sort of thing. But, you know, the ability to train athletes that are going to be able to advance to the college level and hopefully beyond, that's, that's the benchmark, is be able to swim long course. Now, if you look at it in terms of the pool program or the overall program in the nadatorium, you know, if you, if you go by comparison to, let's say, some collegiate facilities where you might see what's called a 50-meter dotted eye configuration, where you've got your long-course pool plus a separate dive well, or if you've got a facility that accommodates two separate bodies of water, one a competition pool and one an instructional pool, there are different programs that might be termed world-class for those different aspects of how they would be used and the different user groups they would accommodate. But that's talking about an entirely different facility program, and it certainly does affect the budget. So as we've gone through the wish list, we've met with the stakeholders through the charrette process, we've heard what the absolute priorities are from the coaching staff, this program will meet the needs of the high school swimming program, the ability for it to grow and those athletes to compete at a world-class level. If we compare it to other facilities, then, you know, there's, there's different programs that could be considered, and that would, that would take additional funding to do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, President Raj. Just a couple of questions. So are we, do we currently have competitive diving, or are we developing a competitive diving? Is that what I'm understanding?
So at this point, we don't have competitive diving, but it is something that our coaches have said that, given the right circumstances, it's definitely something that they're looking forward to, to develop.
Okay.
Can I interject really quickly?
Sure.
There are students that we have that are taking private instruction for diving right now that would be brought immediately into the program. It's kind of like a football kicker. A lot of those are not just football players, they, they take that outside. So I think that we would see that injection into this, into the program very quickly.
Thank you. An additional question, so looking at the DeYoung-Richter graphic, it's a little bit difficult to read, but it looks like they had a hot tub and then, I can't read what this is, but maybe a little rinse-off area for the divers, but I don't see that that made the final cut for the recommendation. Am I missing something?
You may be referring to a trampoline in the corner. What did you call it, this second item?
A rinse-off.
A hot tub, and then, I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's really too tiny and-
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. At this point, we have not included the hot tub as an essential part of the program. It can be accommodated. Usually it's located in one corner of the pool deck, so I don't think it would add more area, if you will, and it's simply a matter of providing that accommodation.
And I'll add that, that, just like the Fine Arts Center, what DeYoung-Richter did then was validated, and so that's the process that the coaching staff and the stakeholders have gone through, is the validation of the original DeYoung-Richter. So it would, it would surmise that they've validated a lot of that programming already, the coaches have, that we can go back and ask if that's specifically, but they would have gone through all that.
We focused on it, it wasn't a priority, so.
Yeah. And the, just a perspective or context, DeYoung-Richter does it, did it at a time and from their perspective as well.
Sure.
And so they just added spaces and an assumed program several years later than the validation.
Is it, I am not very well-educated about competitive diving. I just watch the Olympics and enjoy it tremendously.
Yeah, right.
You know, that's about the extent of my knowledge, so. But I guess my biggest question would be, if, this is a very ambitious project, we really are only going to get one shot at it, we're probably not going to build another athletics complex, I would imagine, anytime in the next half-century. So my question is, is that, is that hot tub and sort of rinse-off area, I mean, I see it on TV, is that an industry standard? Is that what everybody else has and we would be the only ones without it and therefore no one would want to compete at our place, or?
The, the hot tub thing is something that we haven't fully vetted out, but the, the rinse-off areas, the showers that you see and familiar with from the Olympics are things that we actually incorporate within the deck space and are industry standards. It's just not to the level of detail that we've done at this point in the study in that program that Mark presented. Those spaces are spaces that will accommodate further on in design, but it's not something that we have to allocate a square footage for. It's part of the overall deck space, and it's actually, typically it's built into the actual diving tower that we would design at this point.
Okay.
But that's all further detail in the process. It's not necessarily the 30,000 overview that we're at today.
Okay.
So the shower area space, we would have that. The, the hot tub is kind of a budget item that we would have to look at and, and understand, is that going to be able to fit in the budget that we have currently, and if that's something that is a priority or not a priority.
Okay. I think that that was the extent, well, one more question. So the elementary gymnastics area, that would be versatile enough, for instance, to have cheerleaders be able to come there and have a safe place to practice their stunts?
Yes, absolutely, with a high ceiling, with padded or matted floor. So it's a very flexible space. It can even, you notice it was shown as a long, skinny space, so it could have different activities on either end.
And then one last question. I did notice sort of some of the technical specs are with the air UV, I'm assuming that's for antibacterial sort of-
It's part of the pool water treatment system.
Okay.
Secondary disinfection for swimming pool water. So it's just one of the technologies, obviously, that'll be a part of that system, but it's pointed out in this case because of how critical it is for the indoor nadatorium environment. The air quality in that space is very important, and it's very difficult to control. And that starts with water quality. So UV gives us the ability to have a secondary sanitizer that's more effective against chlorine-resistant pathogens for treating the water itself, and it also destructs the combined chlorine that it's going to form when contaminants are introduced to the pool by bodies entering the pool and that sort of thing. So as that, those chloramines form and off-gas, that's what affects the air quality. The UV gives us the ability to control that much more effectively than a traditional single sanitizer system.
Does anyone do salt water, or is that just for home pools?
Primarily for residential pools and pools in smaller settings. It would be very challenging to do a traditional salt system on a pool of this scale with this much water, this volume of water. There are technologies that translate to the commercial, commercial aquatic facilities that use saline generation as a method of generating chlorine, but then you're still just feeding it as chlorine to the pool in that case. We don't want to put salt in the pool water with this large of a body because it raises the total dissolved solids level up so much that it promotes a more corrosive environment.
Interesting, okay. Thank you, I think that's all my questions.
Thank you, President Raj. I was on the swim team in high school, and I would always blame the times that I didn't win on the bulkheads not being placed correctly in the time pads, so. Had to throw that in.
Are you serious?
I really was.
Blame it on those bulkheads, I didn't know.
They weren't positioned correctly. The one question I have is on the, the shared space here for our program. Where, where do you normally put the weigh-in areas for the wrestling team if we're having competitions? Where they all weigh in? Where is that normally placed?
It's planned to be in that multipurpose room that's listed, which would be located near the locker rooms-
Okay.
-and be immediately accessible for those uses.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mays and Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. This is a off-the-wall question. Would it be possible to play water polo in this- Would it be possible to play water polo in this pool? Is it large enough, deep enough, or whatever?
The program that we've set forward in the depth of the profile that Darren discussed earlier will also provide water polo as well. So that gives the district flexibility to add further programs down the road if that's something that they would want to pursue.
Cool, thank you.
Mr. Chapa?
I also have to confess ignorances to a lot of aspects of swimming and diving. But my question is, I heard that the nadatorium depth would be based off of a three-meter board. Is that the maximum height for a swimming competition in UIL?
The maximum height for UIL is one meter. Typically, kind of the industry standard or what we see built across the Texas area in terms of a district nadatorium is one and three-meter diving, primarily because that allows some flexibility in terms of preparing an athlete for either school activities that are outside of UIL or extracurricular activities outside of UIL, and also allows them to prepare for the collegiate level. If a diver is going to dive collegiately, they need to be able to dive one and three-meter diving. The one-meter board would kind of be just a bare minimum.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So I have a question. I don't remember the term, I was starting to look it up. The, kind of related to the polo, but those in the Olympics where they do the, like, the dancing in the water? Synchronized swimming, thank you. Can I do that?
The program as well would also be able to allow synchronized swimming, both from competition and from a practice perspective.
Interesting.
Typically, the diving depths that occur for one and three-meter allow for synchronized swimming as well.
Okay.
And again, it's another primary reason for having the bulkheads is to allow different types of programs to happen at different times.
Yeah, that's great. I'm asking because I think Mr. Hogg's really interested in being expert.
Got a sixth-grade niece that's into synchronized swimming, so. It's deep enough for cannonballs, it's deep enough.
Okay, I have just a couple of quick questions. On the Discovery Charrette, you mentioned stakeholders. The focal point has been wrestling, gymnastics, and swimming. Were those the only specialties as far as coaches and stakeholders involved? Or how wide a swath did we have as stakeholders?
So in the initial one, we had all of those. We had athletic trainers there as well. And then, so subsequent, we've gone out and gotten input from basketball coaches and others that may, and volleyball coaches and others that may use the facility as well. So we tried to make sure that we had all those touchpoints.
I'm just making sure, that's great. I didn't really expect a different answer there, I just wanted to cover bases. And then, for the elementary gymnastics discussion, how likely is it, as far as the district, for those individual schools to be able to get to this facility, to utilize that? I know in elementary programming right now, it's very tight. It's down to the minute as far as what they do and the amount of PE they have per week. Plus, on the budget side with transportation, is that something that we've looked at, that we're going to help provide that access for those kids and the flexibility and the scheduling?
I think that it's definitely the desired outcome. I've had meetings with gymnastics coaches today and just to talk about how we can program that. And so we're still into trying to develop what that actually will look like, but the plan is to make sure that we provide that access for the elementary students.
Okay, great.
For both the gymnastics and the swimming part, the water safety.
Sure, sure, okay. I think that's the only questions that I have. Mr. Hogg, your lights?
Yeah, one last thing, Dr. Reich. I see Ms. Peach out there, so if she'd come up, just, you know, the big discussion came about of first floor versus two-floor in the gymnasium. And with some of the technology, my colleagues, is they can push bleachers in, they're actually real seats. You can still raise it, so the first three levels can be off with a rail, so you still have a little raised floor area. It also makes that floor a little more flexible. I just asked Ms. Peach again, from all the coaches everyone you work with, is that flexible enough? Does it make the right facility correct for what we're trying to do with this? Or is the second floor the critical factor?
I think that they're both very good venues.
Now, you've got to come closer to the mic, otherwise Spencer will yell at us from above.
But I have my coach's voice.
Yeah, you do have the coach's voice right there.
So I think they both have very distinct positive aspects. I think that the versatility of being able to move the bleachers back allows us a very huge benefit of multipurpose because we can use this for some of our elementary programs. You know, we talked about cheerleading. We can bring the bleachers back and put our mats, our padded mats, the cheerleading mats out and do some different things in that venue. The separation, as a coach, knowing that I got yelled at a lot, is important. Not that I deserved it, but I did. But that is important, you know, and I think as long as we can have some separation between those, I think that it works either way in that. You know, we talked about the ADA aspect of it.
Yep.
And so those are some components that I think that we have to look at as we go through. But as far as the overall versatility and the positives for utilizing that system, I think that it's a good system.
Yeah, and to my colleagues, I'll be honest, I came in with the mindset of the two-story. Is the thought of what I see, but I think as we've looked at this more, I was convinced of the one-story, the flexibility it gives to go that route. I think it still gives us, meets both needs, if that's a fair way to say it for my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. One comment, and then I'll release the floor to Mr. Hibbs. I would encourage our staff to coordinate with the city when the time is appropriate. Our city, to my knowledge, doesn't necessarily have anything in our community to warrant their inspection process for a facility like this that's competition-ready. Obviously, they have commercial inspectors for their pools that are recreational in nature. So I would just encourage our staff, when the timing is appropriate, to start having those conversations with city staff to make sure that their inspectors are up to pace so that we can stay on target and not have any hiccups when we start breaking ground and realize that there might be issues at that point in time. I see Ms. Mays has a question. I did have Mr. Hibbs up next. You want to, go ahead, Ms. Mays.
I apologize. I apologize, this question just popped in my mind as I was looking at that coach right there. My mind started going. In here, I don't remember if we had any discussion about areas for scouts, areas for announcers, areas for news media that'll be there watching all of our students perform.
Well, in actual fact, I was going to mention that part of being state-of-the-art includes, you know, an integrated timing system and scoreboards and video displays, broadcast capability, filming capability, the proper lighting to accommodate. All of that is definitely in the plans in both spaces. And that would include, right now, we're showing sort of this mass seating area, but ultimately, it will include a camera platform in strategic locations.
Thank you. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Reich. I'll tell you one of the neat things about, and I don't do this too often, maybe I need to start doing it, sitting back and listening to all my colleagues. Because you guys had some incredible questions and great points. I mean, from, do we have diving now? Is this essential that we have it in our programming? To developing the programming, whether it be with the gymnasium and the swimming pool. When we started the scope, and I remember looking back when we started, you started down the path of the bond. This is one of those things that we were really needing to grapple with. We, at one time, had TIF monies on the east side of town that we were looking, would we use that towards an auditorium center itself? And then we said, okay, can we look at this and expand it to allow our district to be able to start having facilities that could encourage UIL competition? Because we know our football stadiums that we have in our city are very limited. We're not going to be able to facilitate district, by-district games and into the playoffs. But we do have Texas Stadium right in the middle of our backyard. We have a situation where we've got a, you know, the uniqueness of the ballpark in the different facilities, that's part of that. But this is, really allows Arlington to be able to be put onto the map in a very special way, something that we haven't had before. And it's something that's going to be able to be offered, you know, from basically elementary through graduation. And I liked some of the things that we're talking about with access. Ms. Walton, you mentioned like third-grade swimming. I actually took third-grade swimming, that's how I learned to swim. And the way that that was accomplished, and we didn't do it during school hours. I remember going and having a dedicated week where, from 3:00 to 6:00, we were at the facility, and the parents knew to pick us up at 6:30 back at the school during that timeframe. You know, you can, we can start looking outside of the normal school hour timeframe to be able to have different opportunities. But we looked at, you know, originally, this, the gymnastics side of it being part of the facility, and we have that programming that's going to be able to be available for developing and beginning our programs. But when I was speaking to the different wrestling coaches, they said, you know, what we need is, we need a facility. And, you know, it can be on top of a gymnas, or a gymnasium-style floor as long as we have the mats and the right alignment that can facilitate district and regional training. So with, being able to put a facility in where you have six mats, you already have an oversized gym. And to change the scope where we're going to be able to have a, say, a 1,200 to a 1,500-seat facility alone there, we're going to be able to engage in bringing volleyball tournaments. We're going to be able to engage in having by-district and regional basketball tournaments. You know, we're a community of six high schools in our own, but to be able to facilitate a much larger scope than what we were originally envisioning with having a nadatorium for swimming and then just gymnastics and wrestling, I think we're doing a much greater service to our district and to our community. And we already know that the Convention Bureau is already coming, knocking on our door and saying, hey, you're in the middle of the entertainment district. We have the opportunity to do something grand here. You know, to be able to bring in, and by having the different meter boards and being able to bring in USA swimming competitions, being able to bring in maybe regional college events like Jerry Jones brings in. He had Michigan and Florida play last week. You know, being able to have those type of opportunities. I think we're doing, going right down the right path of doing the expansion here. So I would like to recommend, or move at this point, that we accept the recommendations brought to us on the outline of this new facility. And I would encourage my other board members to agree with me on this vote.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Hudson. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hudson, did you, no, okay. I think, just like to comment, well said, Mr. Hibbs. This is a great opportunity. I was, had the privilege to mention earlier what an amazing fine arts district we have. Well, we also have an amazing athletics district. The, and, Ms. Peach, I can't see you, I know you're over there somewhere, but thank you. And to all the staff, all the coaches in the district, this is yet one more way to support our absolutely robust athletics program, but build it and make it even stronger, so very well said. So without any further discussion, we have that motion on the table. Please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative, recommendation passes. All right, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Hey, Dr. Reich, one real quick question. Dr. Fossis, when should this come back out for bid?
So it comes back, there's going to be a schematic design?
Right, you'll see this again in November is what we're anticipating for schematic design, which will be the actual layout of the spaces, the exterior of the building, all of that. Then, once that's approved, we move to design development stage, and then ultimately, construction documents. And our plan right now is to go out to the street for bid for the construction work in April, late April on that. So, and then it would come back to you all to approve the construction.
Got it, understand, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next, under Discussion Action, Letter B, Consider Board of Trustees Handbook. Mr. Hogg?
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Reich. As my colleagues have, you can see, we have the attached copy, an electronic copy also sent to you of the board handbook. This is something that we use as a procedural model to help link up with policies of what we're trying to do to give ourselves and the public the way the board operates as a governing body. We do need methods of how we operate with this. We've had some recommendations come in from Ms. Mays, you have these. I think all these recommendations are well. Unless anyone has, you know, I think we're close to voting on it. I think we'd like the board committee to take one more look at this, review one more time, let everyone look at final copy, and then make changes and bring this back next week for, in two weeks, at the 21st meeting for final approval in the board handbook.
Okay, very good, very good. Since this is open topic right now, does anybody have any questions on the handbook at the current moment? Or are we good to move on? All right, very good, then we will place that on the agenda as an action item for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Next, we'll be considering items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items trustees wish to be withdrawn from the agenda?
President Reich, I would like to see if we could get Item C withdrawn from the consent agenda to vote on separately.
Item C, consider budget changes?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. Any other items to be withdrawn from the consent? All right, seeing none, let's move on then to discuss the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of Item C to be considered separately. Ms. Powell, can you please share bids with us?
On the consent agenda this evening, there are no bids. However, we do have donations, struck-off property offer, and interim financial report. We do have three contracts that we're bringing for consideration this evening.
Very good, very good. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
To approve.
Motion by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? No lights indicated, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative, consent passes. Now to consider Letter C, budget changes separately, Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Reich. I always believe in full disclosure, on one of the items under the budget changes has to do with Camp Thurman. My wife works at Camp Thurman, and as a result, she's not on the board, but she is a member of their executive team. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that there is a granting for the use of AISD dollars at Camp Thurman. So I would like to abstain from that vote. So I would like to abstain from that vote.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Ms. Hudson, second by Ms. Walton. I don't see other discussion. Please vote. One abstention is noted. Motion passes with the other six trustees voting affirmative. Thank you. Moving on now to our discussion item, we have one, Gibson Consulting Report on the Spring 2017 Student Surveys. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to, as we do with our survey results of our employee engagement and district services, we now have our student survey results, and we'd like to provide that as an update to the board. So I welcome our wonderful team from Gibson Consulting. Good evening. So President Reich, Dr. Kavasos, members of the board, thank you for having us. We are here for the fifth year to give you a update and overview of the findings from the student survey that took place spring of last year. And so we have a presentation for you, and it's going to have a lot more numbers, as you've already seen tonight, so that's the bad news. But the good news is, there's a lot of good information in here. And so for some of you that have seen this before, some of the beginning might be a little redundant. We'll talk a little bit about the survey itself and how it's implemented and administered, and then quickly move to the findings to sort of talk about what's, what, what changes and things we've seen this past year. Just a quick introduction for those who haven't met before. I'm Eric Booth from Gibson Consulting. My colleague, Dr. Amy Rappaport, is here as well. And we work with Dr. Barlow's team to implement this survey every year and conduct the survey across all the campuses. And really, an important part of the, the survey for us is that we wouldn't get the kinds of rich data and, and high levels of support that we do if we didn't have basically staff helping us at each campus. So we get really great participation rates, and it's because of the commitment of the staff. And so, again, this year, we've able to, been able to enjoy that, that help from the, each of the campuses that we're pitching in and helping us collect this information. So the survey itself covers six main areas. The goal is to survey the students in the district to understand more information about their views on the quality of instruction in the classrooms, their views about school safety, preparation for college and workforce, that's particularly for just 12th grade students, their participation in after-school and extracurricular-type activities, and their views on sort of the quality of their buildings and facilities. And finally, we ask them some questions about, that are sort of categorized under this concept of lifelong learning. We won't get, have enough time to go through every single one of these domain areas and all the questions, but we'll hit you, we'll give you some of the highlights. And more information is provided in an annual report that we provide that has detail on each of the items, as well as breakouts by subgroups and, and other sort of disag格ations. So as I mentioned, this is our fifth year of collecting data in the district. The first year, we only collected data for 12th graders and sort of, that helped us kind of get the survey in order. And then, in the following years, we extended the survey down to sixth, eighth, and 10th grade. So each year, we, we survey all the students in those grades and that participate, and I'll talk about response rate in a second. But, and over time, starting in 2014, we had a circumstance where we were able to have participants in their first time, maybe in sixth grade in 2014. And what this blue box is showing is that they actually are participating now a second time, once they get to grade eight or 10, so two grades later. So we've started to have repeat data from multiple panels of students, which has really helped in retch the data. We can get perspectives not only from cohort or group to group or grade to grade, but also within students and see how, how their perspectives sort of change over time, which is really great information. There's not a lot of school surveys that have this rich of information. So overall, we have a really large sample size, and about 82%, more than 82% of students responded this year, which was really great. And so thinking back about the sort of every year-to-year response, about 90% of the students who participated this year participated two years ago that were ineligible grades. So it's really, really high repeat rate, and that's provided some of the, some of the overtime analysis I'll talk about here in a second. One quick note about our sort of survey methodology. We, we administered the survey by sending a recruitment package to each campus that has the students' access information, and they go online at the school, and they access the survey online. And that, that anonymous ID is linked back later to their student information, and that's how, in the reporting, we're able to sort of triangulate between student records and survey responses and know a little bit more about these students based on their actual district administrative and P M's information, rather than just self-report. As you can imagine, self-report data is not quite as, as accurate. So that gives us some, some really rich information on student subgroups. The first section, getting to the findings, the first section of survey findings are around quality of instruction types of questions. So the first question asks the students to think about this school year in total and tell us about the quality of teaching at the school. It's important to emphasize that the quality of teaching here is just, we're just asking them what they perceive to be the quality of their teaching. We ask them whether it's poor, okay, good, or excellent, so a four-point scale. And then we differentiate by math, English, science, social studies, and languages other than English, but we only ask those for grades eight and up. And the, one thing as we sort of move into this next year of survey is that this is one area of interest for the district, that we may be sort of retooling or maybe adding questions to learn more about what quality means for the students. But here, we're just getting sort of the perceptual overview from the students about what they, you know, whether they think the instruction they're getting is quality or not. And so this year, what we find, or, I'm sorry, over time, what we have found is when we look at it by area, these graphs, these bar charts are showing the percent of students who rate their instruction as being good or excellent. That'd be a three or four on the scale. So across the bottom, you see the, the scale there. And so for math, going from the first year of the survey, it's 2013-14 school year, it started at about 67.4, and it's only moved up across time. So that's the one where we've seen the most movement upward. The, the red dotted line there is kind of an overall grand mean, just to give you kind of a reference point of what subjects are above and below. It's not anything more than that. English, writing, and science have stayed pretty stable across times, I'm sorry, English and writing. Science ticked down after the first year a little bit, but it's moved back up the last, and you see the change there. It's, it's small. But one thing to keep in mind is, for these surveys, a lot of these findings, you'll see small ticks and some of these changes between years. And so in the reporting, we're careful to sort of note the difference between just small changes that might just be kind of the volatility of up and down of that naturally happens with surveys, it's called regression to the mean. But that's different from whether, when sometimes these effects are actually big enough to be statistically significant differences, and also whether they, and that's a different issue from whether they're substantively important, it's late, I'm sorry, and whether that magnitude is meaningful. And so we try to differentiate between those, but you can see that at the, here at the aggregate level, there's some movement around, but the real big movement here is for math. Kind of looking at it a different way, if we take that graph and look at just 2017, and we flip it on its side, and just, and we look at by subject, the change in the percent of students who say they agree or strongly agree they get a high-quality instruction from their teachers by grade level, so we're going grade level left to right here, what we see is the, the, most of the subjects on here, like English and science and writing, they sort of are higher in sixth grade, they go, they dip in eighth, and then they kind of rise or maybe move around a little bit in high school. The big sort of pattern here that looks like the, probably the slope of a, of a world-class nautatorium pool is that, in sixth grade, you have the rating for math, I'm not an expert on that, don't ask me questions. In sixth grade math, you have 79% of students saying they agree that they receive high-quality instruction. And over time, as math becomes inherently more difficult concept, probably to learn and teach, you see that that percentage goes down. So across grades, it's going down, but across time, that line has moved up. So you can think about like, the slope is about the same year-to-year. It's all, if you remember, for those who were here last year, the, the slope downward is about the same, but that intercept has kind of ticked up over time, which is really interesting. In the report, we kind of disaggregate Y and look by campus and all kinds of fascinating things. And so, kind of related to that, we're also interested in finding ways to sort of, not only just disaggregate by student subgroup, but make comparisons among student subgroups or types of student characteristics that helped us look at sort of similar students. It's, it's parallel to sort of the concept that Dr. Barlow talked about earlier, where he was looking at campuses when he kind of pared down to campuses that were similar, like maybe an S E S or something like that. And so we performed a, a variety of different multivariate models that tried to control for basically getting at statistically similar students, what do we see in terms of their instruction ratings? And we wanted to know which students consistently or systematically give higher or lower instruction ratings compared with their peers. And so what we find is, some of the things are more surprising and less surprising, but overall, students with higher GPAs gave inconsistently higher quality of instruction ratings, students that were not L E P, with one exception I'll talk about in a second, and students that were not special ed gave higher quality of instruction ratings, except in math, there was no statistically significant difference. A couple of things that are a little more, not as obvious. So there were differences by ethnicity, but the, the strongest in magnitude and significance were for the highest performing students. And so there is where you see sort of a differentiation there, that those higher-performing students and giving the higher quality of instruction ratings. And when you look just at that subset of L E P students that I mentioned, even though they didn't give overall higher quality of instruction ratings, if you look at the ones, if you look at the students who are classified L E P, they gave higher quality of instruction, specifically in math and foreign languages, and particularly in high school. And so in the report, we were able to go into sort of more depth in this, in the sense that we could use these factors to kind of get at controlling for these things, which campuses are, are kind of, are basically have higher or lower quality of instruction ratings, but also then doing that similarity adjustment, kind of again, parallel to what Dr. Barlow was mentioning earlier. And it gives a good perspective on where campuses sit relative to one another. Related to quality of instruction is the types of instructional strategies and things going on in the classroom. So the next battery of questions asked about things going on in the classroom, we kind of tuck this under the idea of instructional strategies, but you'll notice that some of them aren't explicitly strategies, but things that are kind of like entailments or artifacts of strategies going on. So I'll, I'll talk about those in one second, but we, we break out the questions by math, English, science, and social studies once again, so that we can ask differently about math teachers versus science teachers and that sort of thing. And the scale here is, again, a one to four, one being that their teachers never engage in these type of strategies or these things aren't going on in the classroom, and four being that they're always going on in their, every day in their classroom. So the strategies are down the left-hand side in this bar chart. And the, if you can't read those, it says that, the first one is that in-class assignments, projects, and activities helped me learn. The second one is I felt comfortable asking questions. The third one is a teacher stopped in to check, to see if students understand concepts before moving on. The fourth is that students were asked to show what they knew in writing, demonstrate. The, the next one is I was given a choice on how to demonstrate their knowledge. And then the last one was whether teachers held their attention. And so this shows just the math area, and students in the highest grade levels, particularly in 12th grade, basically reported using these strategies less often. So you see the, the yellow circles there, those consistently across the board were a little bit lower. Again, you can think about sort of the type of math classes you take in 12th grade. And the contrast here is in English, where we see the differentiation for kind of use, or lower use of these strategies is in eighth grade. So it's, it's a different, different grade level where we're seeing the pattern. There's a lot of bars, so I'm going to kind of move through the big, high-level things. You can stop and ask me questions if you want. For science, the higher level, higher grade levels there that are marked in the yellow bands have pretty consistently, are sort of less use of these different strategies. They're used more often in sixth and eighth grade in the science. And then social studies, again, eighth grade here, it's, is the key grade, but this time it's the reverse. It's that these strategies are being used most often by teachers in eighth grade, so it's the, it's the highest category this time. And so when we provide the results for this study, not only do we have kind of a overall summary report and other analyses as the district asks for them, but we have school-level reports that we provide, school-grade-level reports that provide detail for each campus leadership team about the use of these strategies and quality of instruction and so forth. And so that gives them sort of what's going on from the student's perspective in the classrooms in more detail than we can provide here, and it's for every campus, for every grade. And I'm going to move through a couple of things real quick, just to keep us going. The next one is about, the next area is about student engagement. So again, this is kind of related to what's going on in the classroom, instructional qualities, sort of instructional strategies. The next one is about how student, how engaged students felt. And this grid here shows the percent of students reporting most of the time or always on that scale of how often are these things going on in their classroom. And the boxes, the color of the boxes indicates whether it went up or down significantly from last year. So it had to go up. In this grid, I think it's over about a half percentage point to be a significant enough change to trigger a box color change. So we asked how often the, the following were true. The first one is a reverse-coded item, I noted that there. It's, it's whether they thought their classes were boring. You see that there was a decrease in eighth grade this year in the percent that thought they were boring. So that's not a, we're not talking about improvement or non-improvement, we're talking about an actual numerical increase or decrease. So a decrease there says that less students thought they were boring. But in 12th grade, there was a slight tick up. For whether, when we asked students about whether they enjoyed learning, that one stayed the same in eighth grade, but in the other grade levels, it went down by a few percentage points. For asking whether their courses were challenging, the percent who responded in the affirmative were about 40% in both sixth grade and eighth grade, but it actually ticked up quite by the more than it had in previous years, this year, for 10th and 12th grade. So it's up over 50% now. And then this next one that's bolded for technology use, I'm going to actually talk about that on the next slide, but you can see that at least two-thirds or over half of students said that they had technologies being used in the classroom, and it was the right technology, and have access to it. So the technology use here is, it actually even went up again this year. And then for the next, we asked whether the learning, the things they were learning mattered. It went down slightly for sixth and 12th grade, stayed about the same for the middle grades. And then we only ask about whether material is connected, in other words, that sort of relevance component, for the 12th grade survey, just because of the way it's designed. And that one ticked up by about a point and a half this year. So zooming in on the technology use, what's really interesting here is every year, this is, now we're talking about percent of students who said that they had a lot of technology used in the classroom. Over time, it's gone up. This has been, I think, the biggest move in all of the survey questions, at least in this instructional area. And the biggest move within this is for sixth grade. You can see that when we started in 2014, that black line at the bottom is down below 40% of students saying that technology was often used in their classroom, and now it's nearly at two-thirds. And the other sort of big mover there is the, the blue dotted line, 10th grade moves quite a bit as well. But overall, it's a, it's a really big jump. The next set of questions are about school safety. And so we ask several questions about school safety and where students feel safe and how they feel safe, and in what ways they do and don't feel safe, and also about student respect and staff respect. So this first set of items ask where the student feels safe. And so the idea is asking sort of outside around the school, on school grounds, in the locker rooms, bathrooms, lunchrooms, hallways, common areas, and also in the classroom, when students feel safe or not safe. And one way that we've sort of provided this in the summary presentation is we want to focus in on the area that sort of, what needs most improvement by looking at the percent of students responding not safe. So it's the left-hand of that scale, the one to four scale, it's the percent of students who say not safe. It would be kind of the least safe-feeling students, and so we focus on that, so keep that in mind here. So this gives an overview of where students feel least safe. And you can see that the volume of where students feel least safe is in bathrooms and outside around the school, that's where the yellow bands are around. That's particularly true for lower grades for those two metrics, so sixth and eighth grade, the highest being the outsider around the school for sixth grade. And again, in the report, we kind of break that out by campus and things like that, that would be really useful for school staff. And some other ones that are a little bit higher are 12th graders in the lunchrooms this year, and that's driven by, again, a couple of campuses, and eighth and 12th graders in the locker rooms. One that is lower, but ticked up more than the rest, like in terms of change this year, was that last category. So the in-your-classrooms safety, even though it's a lower percent, it moved up. And I have a graph that shows kind of the difference, but it's, it's on a small scale. So basically, it's for each grade level, the left-hand side is the percent change in reporting not safe. And if you look at the And if you look at the, the circle yellow there that's around for the green dotted line, that's percent who said they didn't feel safe in the classroom. It's really ticked up mostly for sixth grade. It did last between 2015 and 16 for eighth grade, but a lot of it's driven by sixth grade. Again, but that's, it's a, it's a larger change for a small percent, if that makes When we asked about student respect, student respect in general for a lot of the items we ask about went up this year. So this would be students, when we asked about whether students had respectful sort of interaction with their teachers and among one another, the one, I guess, that didn't tick up, and that's what this is showing, is this again, showing difference between years. This isn't actual magnitude or volume of percent of students who reported that they experienced these things. But what we see is that, for that black line with the, the yellow circle noted, that's the percent of students who said that they were teased about race or ethnicity. And between 16 to 17, that increased by about 1.5%, which is a significant increase. It had been actually decreasing from 15, 14, 15 to 15, 16. It was ticking down, and then it went back up. The rest of them, even though there was sort of a, like a tick up in the students enjoying putting others down last year, it sort of reverted back, again, that mean regression idea, but it sort of reverted back in the, there's a couple of other items and they're all sort of ticking downward. So the only really standout is the students teased about race or ethnicity this year. When we asked about school bullying or student aggression and that sort of thing, this graph is basically looking at the percent who said that they worry about these issues, that they have, they think it's a problem, most of the time or always, all the time. And so what we see across the board for, when we ask students about whether they worry about crime being a problem, whether there's too many fights at their school, whether they think physical bullying, verbal bullying, or cyberbullying is a problem, and then finally whether their peer students try to stop bullying. In general, in a lot of these areas, even though there was a tick up when you look back compared to 2014, in the last two years, you see movement down. Those yellow circles show that there's been movement down, some of it a pretty big magnitude, some of it at smaller magnitude. But for the percent of students, for instance, who worry about crime being a problem, it ticked down from 37, I can't read there, 37.6% to 36.6%. Too many fights ticked down, verbal bullying ticked down, cyberbullying ticked down after ticking back up the year before that. That was one of the bigger changes. And the only one that's consistently, if you think about sort of a trend line across time here and a meaningful move, is for physical bullying. So this is the one that sort of stood out for this set of questions. Turning to another aspect of respect about whether staff respect students, the overview of this is that at least half, more than half actually, closer to like two-thirds or three-fourths of students think that the staff at their schools respect them, listen to them, believe in student success, treat, they, they treat students fairly. Like the overview is that it's pretty high. And so you can see that for that first metric, it's over 80% for every grade except for 12th grade. The highest student respect on the other three areas that I just mentioned are in sixth grade, so 73% for sixth grade, for staff, listen to students, and so on. But that's definitely one area that is high and it actually has had a bit of an increase over time as well, which is good news. Moving to the next area, preparation for college and workforce. So these questions are only for 12th graders. We don't ask any lower grade levels. The, the first thing we want to sort of look at is whether students, this is self-reported data, whether they have applied for college of some sort. And so in the first year we asked this question, it was this, about 79% of the respondents said yes. It ticked up in 2014, 15 to 83%. And then it's come down since then, but it's reverted to almost the exact same numbers in the first year. So what we did in the next couple of slides, and I won't go through each one of them, because I know we're compressed on time, but we sort of broke apart who, what makes up that, that proportion, even though it's a small proportion of students that aren't applying at the same rates. And part of it is because there's differential application rates by different student subgroups and for different reasons. But moving kind of quickly through, a big part of the change is that you can see that the percent of students who said they didn't apply for any school kind of went up across the period by about a point and a half or a little less. But we looked at whether they applied only to two-year schools or technical schools, only four-year schools or both. There's been an increase in the percent of students who said they applied for both two and four-year schools. But where the decrease is, is in the students who applied only for a two-year technical school or a four-year school. And the percent of students who said none. Breaking that down one more step, I know I'm jumping through, but we're, if we want to look at sort of what kinds of schools they applied for, the change in it, this is again, a change graph. Here, we're looking at the percent change, percentage points change across years in whether students were applying for technical schools, two-year schools, four-year public and four-year private. This is a little more detailed than the slide before. And what we see is that the sort of decrease last year between 15 and 16 was primarily in the technical school realm. It went from sort of increasing from 14 to 15 to decreasing. And now it's increased by, so 5.9%. So it went from decreasing to increasing by quite a bit, by more than any other group. So I know that there's been some CTE, technical programs and things going on in the district. This is, this is one thing for 12th graders that we've seen a really big change in. And there's a couple of other metrics in a second, you'll see. When we break apart the application rate change by student subgroup, particularly race, ethnicity, the group that sort of has always lagged behind in having a lower rate has been Hispanic students. And we've reported that each year. It went down again this year. When you break it apart, so it's at 70%. Last year, 75% of Hispanic students reported that they had applied. One other quick note before I move to the next slide is that for white students in 2016, the application rate was 81%. It's actually bumped up now to 84%. So that one's ticked up. The other one stayed pretty close to the same. When we use the same chart and we look at it by what performance level they're at, so we broke this into kind of like quartiles, the lowest 25% GPA or performance, the, in the middle are the second quartile, third quartile, and then the highest GPA. Even for that, if you look at that last group of bars, even for the highest performing students, Hispanics are still applying for college or self-reporting applying for college at lower rates than their peers. And they're lower in the other groups as well, but that's, that's an important way to sort of look at the data. I'm going to actually skip through some of the, that, because it gets in the weeds. So the next set of questions asked about, when it comes to college-going activities, we wanted to know how students, what students were doing, what kinds of college-bound activities they, they, they were engaged in. So we had six questions asking about what types of tests they're taking, what types of scholarships or applications they're engaging, filling out and trying to apply for, whether they're going for a full ride, like the gentleman that was here earlier, and things like that. We asked about non-college-bound activities, so towards career, career technical things, getting like technical certifications, things towards a job, job placement programs. We asked about counseling support, supports they were getting from their counselor towards going to college or getting prepped for a career. And then we asked specifically about things that were supported by staff or adults at their school. So this would be, when it says support for colleges, things like the, the staff actually helped them figure out what scores they would need to get into certain colleges, helped them find the applications they would need to fill out for scholarships, things like that. And then for careers, the same thing. It's helping them get, you know, obtain technical certifications, things that were sort of oriented towards what they would need, what skills they would need to learn to go into certain careers if they were interested in them, things like that. So for this year, this gives the kind of percent of, we, we present it a couple of different ways, it mirrors, if you just look at the mean of this different scales, these are scaled items. We have the percent of the activities they engaged in. Over time, the ones that increased over time the most are those college-bound and non-college-bound activities that are student-driven. So those top two groups of bars are things that students report they're doing, that they're going on college visits with their parents, that they're applying for certain scholarships. And it increased for college-bound up to 12.8% last year. And then this year, it did drop down, but not quite, not even close actually to the level it was when we first started doing the survey. But for non-college-bound activities, again, thinking about the career technology sort of aspect, remember that big bump in students applying for a career technology-type or technology, technical school-type programs? You see a bump there in student-driven, non-college-bound activities that include getting technical certifications. And the one that dropped the most across the period was for counseling support, so direct work they were doing with the counselor. It dropped again this year. The other one kind of fluctuated around the same point. There was, for adult-supported things, there was a bit of a bump in both adult-supported career and college-bound last year, and that kind of reverted back to where it'd been the years prior. I'm not going to skip this one. This one visualizes sort of the change in some of the activities. This is sort of zooms in on some of the activities. And what it's showing again is, across time on the bottom, it's showing the percent change from year to year in students reporting that they're doing these things. And so one quick thing to note is, the first three lines in the legend are college visits, taking AP and IB and applying for scholarships. All three of those things are pretty leveler, kind of staying, they jump up a little in the middle and then have, again, the mean regression thing going on. But they're staying about the same across the period. The next one is the blue line that says apply for a scholarship, and that one moves down. That doesn't mean less students are applying for scholarships. It means there's a decrease, a smaller increase in the students that are taking, applying for scholarships. So again, this is change. And then the last two are really where we see the biggest percent increase. We, we have between 16 and 17, a 4.4% increase in students saying that they were obtaining technical certifications, and then a 7.6% increase in the percent saying that they had contacted and talked with a military recruiter. So we thought those were interesting, really big jumps. This shows the test rates pretty, it's pretty flat, and, well, the trend is pretty stable as what we've seen in previous years. PSAT rates have gone up a little across the, or quite a bit actually, across the trend. SAT rates have gone up. They ticked down a little from last year, but not by much. And then ACT, I have circled there at the last year because it, it ticked down probably the most between last year and this year, but you can think about admission requirement changes, about what tests are accepted and things like that. And then the sort of last section that we'll discuss, I have some of the other slides if you're interested, but one that's always of interest with the district is about after-school activities and engagement with the community. So here, we ask about what types of school-affiliated activities that students are engaging in, so like academic student clubs. We also ask about off-campus community engagement activities and different things they're doing. And then we ask about community service or volunteer work outside of school. And finally, we actually get the, the percent of students that are participating in some sort of co-curricular or extracurricular type class at school. So that's, that's the one that's in the first row. It's got the gray sort of circle around it. That's, that's from actual student course records. That's not from our survey, but it's to kind of give context to the table. So the percent of students who say that they are, I'm sorry, the percent of students who are enrolled in these courses is about 25% in sixth grade and close, over 80% for, and even 90% for eighth grade. Again, this follows the same scheme where if it's a blue box, it increased from last year, and if it's a gold-yellow box, it decreased. So we saw an increase for students taking extracurricular classes in every grade this year. There's more offerings, more students taking them. We saw a decrease in students engaging in extracurricular-type activities, clubs and things like that, but it wasn't much. It was actually no change for 10th grade, and 12th grade barely ticked down enough to reach that, that threshold. Off-campus engagement with their community stayed about the same for sixth grade. It's always been a little higher for eighth, 10th, and 12th grade, and it actually ticked up for eighth and 12th grade this year. And then outside of community, outside of school, community service, volunteer opportunities, they're tough for sixth graders. It's harder to sort of have opportunities to go and engage in the community when you're in sixth grade, so it's always been lower. It ticked down a little bit this year, I think about a point and a half, but it went up quite a bit in eighth and 12th grade this year. And then overall, that summation sort of at the bottom is the overall percent that engaged in at least one of the things above, so they could engage in multiple or one or something like that. That percent, that 91% is kind of, did they do any of these things? Last year, that percent was 89.5, I think, or four. And this year, it went to 91%. So it's increased overall, that students are doing at least one of these things. I'm going to skip kind of the, I know we're short on time, and that's just a picture of sort of the school-level reporting that we give for every school and grade level. And I will be happy to take any of your questions or feedback.
Thank you very much. I think we're all good. We can go home now.
That's a lot for this late.
No, it's great information. Are there trustees with questions? No lights indicated. Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, President Reich. So on, I'm going to start, I'm going to start from the back and kind of go towards the beginning.
Sure.
So on after-school activities. Why are we not asking about jobs?
We can ask about it. I mean, it would, it would be something we'd want to ask just for the higher-grade levels, but we don't currently ask about it.
I'm just curious, because I would wonder, it seems logical that if kids are working jobs, that they're less available to participate in these kind of things.
Sure.
And having some data to back that up might allow us to target those students in a different way or something like that. So that was just a question that I had.
Yeah, I think for a lot of the areas of the student survey, this year in particular, we're looking to, to, you know, retool certain areas to, to enhance the survey and try to get at those kinds of questions. So it's a great addition. I think we can look at, see if we can add that and if it makes sense.
I, I don't know that you can answer this, but I found student actions and staff support, the decrease in counseling activities. I just find that a little concerning. I know that we approved higher ratios of counselors a few years ago, but then I think, isn't it, is it that we've changed something because of House Bill 5, and so the, the counseling activities are being directed differently? What, do we know what the source of that is?
So that's, that's always an intriguing one, and we dealt with it in terms of analyzing it. So I'll start with the big picture first, because I think that's important to set a context. This is one of those years where we go to the next level with surveys. So employee engagement, by the way, Gibson's going to do that, and district services. And so we're retooling, reframing the surveys. For example, why aren't some students applying for college? We're going to ask more directly. Tell us what you think the barriers are, right? Because we keep trying to figure them out in kind of a different way. But to that point of counselors, one thing that sticks out, and, and again, it requires further analysis, so I'll just, I'll just start with that, is that the counseling aspect seems to be more dispersed. We have go centers. We have CTEI that's been done in the, in the school. We have more people in the school system functioning as counselors or advisors, if you will. They're not formal, but students are receiving their information in different ways. We have dual credit, very robust. We have CTEIs, I think, deals with a lot of that planning. Still the question, why not the more of the counselor interaction? But that, that's an assumption, and, and because we've expanded so much in students' access to information, parents, kind of college nights and things like that, that they may simply be getting the information differently. Because the actual effect, which is like the application rate and things like that, seems pretty stable, not with all populations. It's gone up in certain cases. The technical is a real good example. They may be getting that information in their career tech courses and not interacting necessarily with a counselor, traditional counselor. Leads to a bigger question about reframing the whole aspect of guidance and the fact that, you know, everybody plays a role in guiding a student in their future. But those are some insights that, that we have, but we want to get more through purposeful surveying, and that's, that's the point we are now with student surveys.
Bear with me here, it's a lot of pages.
No problem.
Thank you.
This was the short version of the presentation.
I mean, I love it. I think it's great that we have so much data, and particularly to take it to the campus level and really do some, some targeted work. I, I'm hoping that it's very helpful for our principals and our teachers. So one of my questions is, are we taking a look at any of these, particularly the, the quality of instruction in math, English, writing? Are we taking a look at these students by gender to see if we're perhaps reaching some in a different way or better or worse?
So not in these slides, but in the reporting, that's actually one aspect this year that we took a look at, because there is, I don't have those slides prepared, but there is a difference. I mean, we know there's a difference in I mean, we know there's a difference in college grading rates and GPAs by gender, but sort of taking a deeper dive at, looking at, not only gender, but it's actually, one really interesting one that comes out is gender, race, ethnicity subcategories, and then also by SES. And so, we try to break it out and explore that. We're actually still kind of in the process of that one, but there's some really interesting subgroups, and it's something that, if some really clear messages come through enough, I feel like if we do this same presentation next year, it might be a great place to add a slide to sort of see what the overarching pattern is.
Thank you.
But there is definitely some interesting patterns there.
Yeah. So, just sort of, probably a rhetorical question, but when you look at the factors influencing the quality of instructions, and it seems like the students that are performing better have a better outlook on the instruction that they're receiving?
Sure.
I guess my question is sort of, is that an accurate reflection of the instruction that they're receiving, or is that really more a reflection of how they feel about themselves and their own performance? So, how useful is that to us, or how do we use that information to inform our work?
So, I think with that one, you're exactly right, it's a sort of, the arrow's pointed both ways, endogenous sort of circle, circular thing, right? And so, it's a, in terms of what we're measuring, is sort of the student's perception about how things are going, and it's going to be sunnier if they're doing better, probably. And so, I think when we show the bullets of the types of students that show higher quality of instruction rates, that's not, that's why I guess we say it's like not surprising. I think for next year, we've already started some dialogue back and forth with the district about, it's going to be important to think about what we're measuring, and whether we may want to just sort of retool that whole section, because that is important. It's also hard to get at using this sort of self-report inventory about asking students about quality of instruction, you have to kind of triangulate it using a bunch of sort of different questions, and we can do that. It's just, these are sort of the same questions we've been asking since the beginning.
Sure.
I think it's now is a great time to do a sort of hard look at it, especially as we start to be able, as you mentioned, triangulate the data, we'll have the teacher data and the parent data, and sort of think about how there's alignment or misalignment between the views on, you know, what quality teaching is, or what's going on in the classroom.
Dr. Cavassos?
Sure. So, just a little context on that, keeping with the same theme of retooling and making sure we're getting information that can be actionable. So, like the employee engagement survey, not to go off on that tangent, but because of the work that we're going to be doing with Gibson, to understand, are these first-year teachers, are these veteran teachers, who's providing this kind of feedback about engagement? The same thing with students. The active learning cycle, as you've heard, Dr. Words, we won't go through that presentation tonight, but the extensive work that's been done with piloting schools and classrooms, that we dig down into their engagement to see if it's actually making a difference. And that's a level of specificity that Gibson provides with collaboration with our staff. So, that's a retooling for next year to really validate our active learning cycle implementation in the classroom, and is that actually going to show a difference with a variety of populations of students.
I just want to say, it's great to hear that, because it is obvious that the higher performers are going to be more satisfied, think everything's rosy. The lower performers, that's throughout this, what I've been thinking over and over is, well, what does it tell us? What does it tell us? And the more we can drill down, that's great to hear, that it will be retooled, so that we can truly find out, where is it a deficit on the district's part? What can we do to enhance that student's experience? That'd be great.
And to the credit of strategic plan and the work that's been done before, that's what guided us to an active learning cycle, to a really change in the classroom that is needed to continue the engagement and improve the engagement for all students, and that's a credit to Stephen and his work with the academics department.
So, that was the end of my questions, but I do just want to make a general statement. This work began before I came on the board. I think collecting this data, the employee engagement, all of that is so important, and I think it really, it gives us a basis where to go, to inform our work, and then you, it's only just now beginning, sort of, because it takes a little while to get the data, and then know, what questions are we not asking? What else do we need to know that we're not finding out through what we've collected? So, the investment made by administration, staff, and previous boards, I really appreciate, and I appreciate that we're continuing to evolve with the data that we're collecting to inform our work. I think it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, and I have actually quite a few questions, and I'm going to maybe try to truncate them by starting out by saying, was there a qualitative component to the research that you did? Because to me, the results that I see here are extremely interesting, but at the same time also beg a lot of questions. And so, in some cases, I feel like if there's a qualitative component to that, that would be great, and I'd like to explore that maybe a little further as to what the reasons to those responses might be.
There is not a qualitative component. I agree with you, that would, I mean, in what we do, that sort of triangulation between qualitative and quantitative, having this mixed method study, really give you sort of the rich detail about what's going on. A great example is the question that Dr. Cavassos brought a second ago about, we see this decrease in, particularly for Hispanic students and their application rates, like understanding the obstacles and barriers they're facing, and how those are different from maybe campus-to-campus, or whatever it might be, would be really important. It's something that we're, it's currently not set up in terms of the way we are contracted or what we're doing, but I think that's where you get a lot of value, and, yeah.
Okay. I think that will significantly shorten the number of questions.
Okay, all right.
To everybody's great relief. So, then I'll move on to, so I want to look at the, this is on page 23 or 44, this is the students, student respect items, and this was, you noticed that there was an uptick in the number of students that were teased about race or ethnicity. Is it possible to break down those responses by student ethnicity?
Are you on this one?
Yes.
Okay, say again. Yes, it is. And actually, it was something that I was doing this last week. Yes, it is possible. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but in two ways. One is just breaking out by race and ethnicity, but another way that I'm looking at it is, or we're looking at it, is to look at students who are sort of, I guess, like, we call it sort of race/ethnicity heterogeneity, so it's, they're different from their peers in their classes or their grade level, and whether they, if they are different from what the sort of standard is, and like what other students look like in their grade, whether they say anything different as well. So, just kind of picking a threshold of, or a metric of their, these types of students are different, do they respond any differently than their peers? So, just kind of trying to cut it a couple of different ways and understand why. I don't have those with me, and it's still something I'm kind of working on, but it's...
Okay. I mean, without any, you know, particular numbers attached to it, though, I mean, I assume that this response rate was for all students, but if, you know, what you were looking through, you said this last week, did you notice that there was any pronounced effect more by one race or ethnicity?
Yes.
Or was it significant?
Yes. Yep. And it also has interacted with SES, like lower SES versus higher SES, and being of a certain race having a different pattern.
And in particular, did you notice that there was anyone, I mean, what was that?
So, I don't want to mix it up, but I'm pretty sure it was actually, I don't want to get it wrong. So, I would prefer, I can follow up, I'm happy to send you that information. It's, yeah, I just, I was looking at all these different analyses we're doing, that I'm going to get it backwards, and then I'm going to feel bad about getting it backwards.
And would it also be possible to break that down by campus level?
Yeah, we do that with almost every one of these analyses in the full report.
Okay, and then I wanted to move on to, this is on page 29 of 44. This blurs over into the thing, I wish we had more qualitative data to analyze, but again, the decrease in the number of Hispanic students that reported application rates, you know, you start in 2014, it was 74.2, goes up to 77.8 in 2015, and then it's been down, you know, since then. Are we looking at something that you think might be a regression to the mean, or is this...
Which slide are you on? I'm sorry.
This is on 29 of 44.
This one here? I think maybe my page numbers are different, sorry. It's 28.
Mine says 29.
It's a slide error.
Oh.
It's okay.
I can't read PowerPoints. Yeah, so 28 of 44. Is that a regression to the mean, you think, or is that, do you think that that's a trend, or do we need another year of data?
Are you talking about for Hispanics? Or for which group?
Yes.
So, it went from 74, and it ticked up to 78, and then back to 75, and down to 70. I think it's possible, I mean, if you, there's a statistical test you can perform to sort of say, is that dropped 70 enough to get there? And I have not run that to say whether it is or not. If you're sort of thinking about it from a, like whether that magnitude is meaningful, that five-point or four-point-something movement in years is quite large compared to the other movement on the chart. So, I would suspect it's probably more than, like if it, when we got to 2016, I think that looked to me like regression to the mean. But now that it moves here, I feel like, well, maybe it's breaking from that pattern. I think you're right, like one more year would probably, if it continued, kind of tell us more of a story on this. But I haven't run the statistical trend test to tell you whether it's like off these data points, if it's significant. I think, given that that's a big move compared to the other groups, I think that's of magnitude, it's a pretty large movement. That's as far as I can probably speak.
Okay, and then the last question I have is on 34 or 44, now that I know what I'm looking at.
Sure.
And this was the, what are student, the change in student actions with a really significant increase in the number of students that are talking to military recruiters and obtaining tech certifications? And I do sort of agree with you that the district has been launching a number of CTE initiatives that probably partially explain the rise in people interested in technical certifications. And this is more a question for Dr. Cavassos, I guess, but is there anything different that's happening either at the district level or the high school campuses that would explain such a significant increase in students talking to military recruiters?
I don't know that there's anything significantly different. I think as students explore all the options they have and ways to pay for college and things like that, I think that that has become more of the forefront. But in terms of a specific effort, nothing that I'm aware of that has been targeting that. The career tech, yes. Military, not so much.
Okay. Well, this is very interesting, and I, as I said, sort of at the beginning, I would be even more interested to see how some of these break down by, you know, campus level and race and ethnicity. But again, to echo what Ms. Hudson said a few minutes ago, I think this is the type of data that we need to be collecting on a regular basis and, you know, looking at very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and I guess on that note, it would be pretty simple to send us the unabridged version that essentially Mr. Chapa is looking for.
We're still finalizing that partially through y'all's feedback, and also, we're feedback-reating from the district, so as soon as it's ready, Dr. Barlow will have it.
Then we'll receive it then.
And, yeah.
Okay, so, we'll get it then. Very good. Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Eric, thank you, and from all, from, I remember the first time Greg came in, presented from, you'll do a great job, and let me echo Mr. Chapa and Ms. Hudson, that collecting this data, when we first started this, we knew it'd take a couple of years to develop baselines. And so, I really appreciate the board and the entire staff doing this. I agree with Mr. Chapa. If we need to work at a contract to make it more qualitative data, we need to talk about that, because I do think it gives us outcomes. It gives us findings of where we're trying to go. It's awesome data. It's awesome data that I'd say, so what? Right? And that may be a little hard to say.
Sure.
But I want to see, we've got to be, you know, I want Dr. Barlow and Dr. Cavassos and each campus to take deep dives into this data, so it's awesome on that perspective. I want to look from a vision, strategic planning level of what does this impact outcomes and decisions from visions and strategies of where we're trying to go. And I don't say that so what is a negative, that's not a negative thing whatsoever. I want to know what outcomes, and with that, I would say, you know, Dr. Barlow, I would task you, Dr. Cavassos, and staff to say, from a district standpoint, what's the five things that we're looking at from a high-level perspective that task from this, that we've now developed this? I would also ask a little more on the trend, you know, has a trend test come up? How we produce the trends? Because that's, I think that's the way you have to do it. As we heard earlier on student achievement, it's pretty tough to track some of that, because the state keeps changing. We've got to be consistent on what we're training in. And Dr. Cavassos, as you said, we're retooling this and taking this next step, fully agree with that 100% of where we're going. I'd also like to know, you know, Mr. Chapa, I fully agree, looking at it from the data, but I feel like that data is going to overwhelm me, just in full disclosure, it's going to be a lot of data. If I get this for 76 or so campuses, I don't send it to me paper-wise, because I don't want to kill a tree, and I'm just going to throw it away. So, but electronically, I may glance through it. But with that, I'd ask Dr. Cavassos and Dr. Barlow, how is this being applied at each campus? What is each campus doing to take this and apply it? Are they linking this to their campus improvement plans? Is that where it's linking so that we can see progress and outcomes? Because we're doing this to show we're making progress in all our separate areas, because if we're not making progress as an organization, we're not moving forward. We're not doing these just to say, oh, wow, these, great, awesome. Where are we making progress? And are we continually making progress? And if we're not, then we, why not? What's happening on this progress? I'd also say...
Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, sorry. I'm throwing a million out there.
There's a bunch of questions, but I would ask Stephen to come by, he's there, but he's... So, a couple of things, Mr. Hogg, because I think, I think it's, you've hit on a lot of important points, and just to provide a context. So, the big yield, big picture first, is that as a district, which it kind of validates the things that others have said as well, we have given voice...
That's right.
...to thousands of students.
And students are honest.
Not just this last year, but over the last several years, to thousands of students that have given a voice to their instruction, their safety, et cetera. So, big things that it's yielded, because I'm with you about, well, what are the actionable after this period of time? I'll point to three big things, some are, one is probably bigger than the other, but the active learning cycle on engaging every classroom and every student across the system, and the work that has been launched is one of the biggest yields. The other is PBIS, and I know we've talked a lot about PBIS, but if you notice the respect for students, the respect for each other, there are some areas, race and ethnicity that wasn't, but the other areas really showed improvement. PBIS in the classroom, in our systems, in our campuses was a big yield, because this informed us in areas we had to grow. And then the safety, if you notice the safety for students, in particular sixth graders, and where they felt safe and didn't feel safe, and how that's improved in terms of their feeling safe, that's work that has been informed, and the big pieces in our district. In terms of what they do with it, there are actionable, and they do take it to their campus plan, I'll let Stephen address that. I don't know if you want to say anything else about the active learning cycle, but I think that's a big yield.
Well, I would say, the point that I would make about that is, if you look on the data that the students provided, one of the key indicators that went down consistently is that they're enjoying their learning experience. And so, what we want to do is leverage the data specifically to look and see which schools are actually engaging in the active learning cycle process and which ones aren't, is there a difference in the way that those kids are responding, to see if it's actually impacting their learning in the way that we want them to. In terms of your question about action planning, so, we, what we do is, this is a lot of data, like you said. Every campus receives a copy of theirs, and then we chunk it up over the course of the school year to give principals an opportunity in a, basically in a collaborative setting to work through their data and to learn about the data in context of the district as a whole, rather than sitting them in a meeting and kind of bombarding them with, you know, 55 slides of information. We give them theirs, and then we chunk it at the district level that we provided them. They go through the campus improvement planning process, and we do set specific targets at the district improvement planning goals, where we do look at some of this data as part of our measures, and then that cascades down to campuses. So, the campuses do leverage this data in their needs assessment process, and they will have goals in their campus improvement plans that are connected to the highest leverage points that they identify from this data set.
And that's appreciated, and I know on our district goals, we have...
Absolutely.
Pieces of the employee engagement and student engagement, so we're getting some of those high levels. I think I say it from, you know, as we get all this data, 44 slides, where's our slide that says, here's the five findings we have from this data, right? Where's my, you know, you've always been taught a long time ago, what's your one-page summary of view of the findings of this? Because a lot of times, if you don't give, if you give more than one page, people only read, they don't have the attention span myself to read longer than one page. So, just laying it out. Dr. Cavassos, I'd also relate, I think this needs to relate to some of our programs, right? As Mr. Chapa brought it up, and I think it's specific, we saw this, and one of the reasons you did such a great job of tasking is, we saw our Hispanic students that were high performers were not applying to college. So, we started our UNT partnership... So, we started our UNT partnership, our UTA partnership of automatic admission to get those in there. So, you know, where, and I can't, we started those three, four years ago, I can't remember exactly the time. I think we need to relate on those findings of how these programs went in place. Did it increase, right? So, can we see a program that directly relates and relates to those increase? So, I'd hope who's ever overseeing that program is helping us track the program outcomes from that type of program.
Absolutely. And the opportunity there for qualitative data, as much as Kevin loves qualitative data, Dr. Barlow does. You know, we do it for employee engagement, so just a little context, Mr. Chapa, that we do that for employee engagement and it provides a lot of important information with our, with our qualitative.
I appreciate it, Dr. Barlow. When we had employee engagement, it's like, here's all the data. And I was the one asking for it at the start and you were like, please hold off till we can give you findings because, and I appreciate that. I can back off sometimes. The last thing I'll say is, you know, listen, I'm a Net Promoter Score guy. I'm a Net Promoter Score guy. And if y'all don't know Net Promoter, it's the biggest and I think the best corporate tracker and it's, pretty much comes down to one question. How likely are you to recommend to others, your product, your company? And that's what you're asking your clients, their customers, those things. And it is probably the best tracker out there. And I just say that from big, broad spectrum. Where's our one question that we're finding from all these other pieces to be able to outcomes? So, I appreciate, I think this data is awesome. I think we're, you can see the progress we're making on some of those, you can see some of it or not. I just, I want us to link it, make sure everything's linking and it's not just a bunch of data. We all talk about and we do a really good job as a board of, our strategic plan is a living, breathing document. We actually use it. So, now we got to make sure, are we using this data properly? And I think Gibson, y'all, y'all have helped take us to a new level on data collection. And honestly, it is head and shoulders above what a lot of our colleagues around the state are doing. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Rush. Back to the slide that Mr. Chapa was talking about, 28. The Hispanic students reporting application rates continue to decrease. And it made me think, you know, there's so many pressures from all different spots and it made me think that could recent changes in the national pressures on the status of our immigrants, especially our Hispanic immigrants, have affected this decline?
It could. I think there's a couple of things to note here. One, we don't ask or have data on that. We do not, also, we don't know, someone here mentioned the program with, for Hispanic students, the connections to UNT. We don't have information on program-specific details about outcomes at different schools, like maybe some schools are implementing it more to fidelity than others or at all. So, we don't have some of that contextual information, I think, would kind of get at both of those questions. But to your main point about whether the immigration status would, could or would affect it, I suspect it would. I just, we just don't have data to get any leverage on that question. And if that's something that the district's interested in, we can talk about that certainly.
Thank you.
I don't see any other lights indicating no further questions. This was great information. Looking forward to the comments received being incorporated into the future studies. We, as you indicated, Ms. Hudson, we started from scratch. We didn't have anything several years ago. So, to go from there to this.
I mean, Dr. Rush, it started from when we created the first strategic plan.
That's right.
The students came in and it was so impactful on the whole board of what the students' opinions, that's where.
That's right.
This came from.
That's right. That's right. So, it's really a great day to be able to say, okay, now let's really be intelligent about this process and what we're doing so that we can have better informed process and procedure going forward. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next on our agenda is the open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards. Okay. So, we will move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rush. And I shared some information about our district briefly. And we started a busy school year with our State of the District luncheon. And I want to thank all our community partners, in particular Fielder Church, that has helped us with our back-to-school efforts. The State of the District is really an important time for our community to really understand what we're doing in the school district and then us show the appreciation to them as well. So, thank you, the Chamber of Commerce, for putting that event together. Next, our third annual AISD back-to-school kickoff was August 12 at AT&amp;T Stadium. We had over 9,000 backpacks filled with supplies that were handed out to our students. Parents and students alike were extremely appreciative of the effort. Again, I've said this before, this is really a demonstration of our entire community showing the love that they have for education and for young people. I want a special thank you to Aaron Pedales and his committee for doing an amazing job and pulling this off at this magnitude and all our community partners that helped with that, but in particular, Mr. Pedales. He did an outstanding job, continues to do that. We held our convocation and we hadn't held one in several years and we held one August 14 at College Park. And we had a great, great opportunity to visit with our teachers and also welcome Tim Kopra from, as an astronaut who came to speak to our teachers and our wonderful board there on stage. Not sure what's going on there, but it seems very happy.
So, mid-performing.
Yeah. So.
Jamie, I play head shoulder.
There you go. Did a fine job. Fine job. First day of school was our annual tweet-along and had the opportunity to pick up and drive to work, a first-year teacher from Owlesley Junior High and seventh-grade English teacher. And this young man was ready and enthusiastic about meeting his students. He did a great job. We then drove him home and met his father and we had already met his mother and his father was just like, what are you all doing? But then we explained and it was all good and very, very much of endorsement. So, it was a great day for our students and I want to thank our teachers in particular and all our staff for having such a smooth opening to our school year. And I want to thank them on behalf of all our students that sincerely appreciate their work every single day. We're happy to have our students now occupying our Dan Diaper Career Technical Center. And we'll eventually have a dedication and things like that, but it's important, I think, as we start this school year to really reflect on the fact that thousands of students are now taking advantage of an opportunity in Arlington ISD that for many years has been a desire of our community. And I think it's a special time, it's a hallmark time for our school, our school district. And I want to thank the staff at the Career Tech Center, Ginger Poulster, all our central staff, Cindy Michael and Transportation, Lesley, everyone else that helped open this facility for our young people and our students. So, a special thank you again to the staff at the Career Tech Center who are very dedicated to serving our students. And then finally, on Tuesday, I was able to stop by Piercy Elementary and I had already gone to Fitzgerald, just to be clear, and thanked them and congratulate them for earning all six distinctions in the accountability ratings that you heard about just earlier in the meeting. And I'm making my way to Bailey Junior High also, just to, and Gunn, shouldn't forget that, for their celebration as well. So, again, a special thank you to our teachers and our new staff that's joining us. It's a special time in our district and I'm energized with the engagement that I see at the schools with our students and our teachers. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Are there any school board members with reports?
Ms. Mace?
Thank you, President Rush. I just wanted to say that prayers continue to go out to our communities and families that have been impacted by Hurricane Harvey. I have family that has been displaced and not having access to your day-to-day comforts and the routines that you do every day is not easy. AISD has opened stores to many of these students and I, and I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues and the district, want to welcome them and their families to our community and want to make sure that every student knows that as soon as they set a foot on any of our campuses, they have become part of the AISD family. So, we welcome them, want them to learn all that they can in the classroom and hope that we invite, that we have an environment that really encourages them to be a part and continue to learn.
Very well said, Ms. Mace. Thank you for that. Any other trustees with reports?